The City of Seaside, City Council and the Success Agency for the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Seaside, regular 5 p.m. meeting here at October 16th, 2025, and City Hall Chambers will come to order. A roll call, please.
Council and agency member Miller?
Here.
Council and agency member Burks? Council and agency member Garcia Arizola?
Here.
Mayor Protim and Vice Chair Pacheco? Mayor and Chair Oglesby?
Here.
You do have a quorum.
I thank you so much. We will have a moment of silence and then the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Miller, if you would, please. Thank you. We go to item number four, review of agenda. City manager, is there any items to add or remove from the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Staff requests the removal of item 12C.
Okay, thank you. I do expect some type of recess around the 7:30 hour. I go to item number five, which is public comment. Members of the public wishing to address City Council matters underneath the jurisdiction of the City of Seaside but not on this agenda may do so for up to three minutes. This also the time to comment on presentation items. We ask that you hold your items on items on agenda until that item is called. You also have three minutes to talk on that when that item is called. For the benefit of the public, please state your name. Public comments are not open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you're calling from a phone.
Start. Well, first, I would like to thank the board members for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Robin... Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to take... to thank the board members for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Robin Jensen, and I live in Seaside. One of my doctor's health commands is to take a minimum one-mile walk every day. My favorite walk is Robert's Lake. I love being with the trees, the plants, the flowers, the water, the birds, and all the flora and fauna of the beautiful area. Yesterday, as I was walking on the west side across from the hotel, which is in Monterey, I noticed some men pulling up some of the ground plants and flowers from an open section that borders Robert's Avenue. I greeted them and asked them what they were doing, thinking it might be a fire deterrent. They later told me they were clearing the ground for a pizza establishment. Pizza house on land regulated by the California State Coastal Conservatory, a restaurant on property heretofore certified for nature. As I walked away, I started crying, believe it or not. If this follows through, my nature walks will be good as ruined. What about the birds and the ground critters who live there? Does anyone care about those? I beseech, beg, and plead with you to terminate the cunning commercial contract. Let the open section remain just that. We don't need more pizza. We need natural beauty. We don't need parked cars. We need more flowers, squirrels, birds, and other natural creatures. Money should not motivate us. Beauty and nature should. I do not see me walking around the lake after the construction starts. My heart's heart will not be able to take it. Hundreds more would agree. I don't think you would like it either. There may... you may even lose attendance on the lake as a result. I thank you for listening to me.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you're calling from a phone.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members and city staff, my name is Robert Daniels, Jr., and I'm a neighborhood organizer with Building Healthy Communities. I humbly approach offering my perspective to a critical issue with insight that relies on both my professional experience, being the sole organizer on two tenant-focused campaigns, Seabreeze and the Del Monte Manners, and my personal experience being a lifelong member of this community. Housing in Seaside needs an overhaul. Housing in Seaside needs attention, and tenants in Seaside need help. Over the last few months, I have circulated a housing survey, and through their surveys, conducted interviews and testimonials where I collected an overwhelming majority of respondents, and subsequent interviewees reported high rents, structural inhabitability issues, and abusive and oppressive landlord tactics. The story in the data themselves weren't necessarily shocking. It directly corroborated similar stories that I collected through my campaigns, but the shocking part was that they were outside what I've typically been considered hot zones, which points to a larger city issue. When attempting to compare this data with city data, we realized that the city didn't have any. The city doesn't... the city doesn't know where renting, who's renting what, where the renting's happening, and how much rent is being charged, and where specifically these renters are located. I say it's an issue for a variety of reasons, mainly because the city is general... generally unaware of the health of its rental market, and with an ever-expanding city, it would be in the city's best interest to be fully aware. Furthermore, addressing the topic of structural inhabitability issues, the current process has a major flaw in it, which allows landlords to basically get into the process in which tenants rely on the city to get repairs. Collically, it's been called eviction by contract, but really it's just starting the discussion on finding solutions to this problem. Cities around us, basically cities in California, but a lot of cities around us have forthwatered a lot of these issues with annual inspections. I completely understand the argument that it doesn't address immediate issues, but it does prevent that a resident in your city will be living in long-term squalor. In conclusion, I ask for a more formalized discussion, specifically addressing the potential for a rental registry with an annual inspection component. Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. My, este, representantes de la ciudad de Seaside. Mi nombre es Francisca Rollo Rosales. Soy trabajadora comunitaria y también residente de este lugar tan maravilloso. Vengo aquí muy preocupada por todas las, ah, peticiones o preocupaciones más que nada de la comunidad en donde me hacen llegar los comentarios de que la renta es muy alta. Vengo aquí por, ah, el representante de ellos porque ellos trabajan, son gente muy trabajadora, entonces ellos no pueden venir a esta hora, ¿verdad? Quizá en el futuro vengan para que ellos puedan tener testimonios de lo que está pasando de esa renta que es demasiada excesiva. No solamente es la renta que es muy cara, sino que también las condiciones de estos departamentos son muy precarias. Yo les pido a ustedes que cada año sean inspeccionadas esos edificios, que estengan en condiciones adecuadas para que la gente pueda vivir. Yo personalmente estoy viviendo una situación de esas en donde no tengo refrigerador, en buenas condiciones porque me dieron uno que tenía mo. Yo no puedo... yo no puedo tener un electrodoméstico de esa, en esas condiciones, por eso compré uno. Otro, hay hoyos dentro de los departamentos. Esa es otra situación que también vive muchas personas. Se inundan y nada más les ponen, este, ventiladores para que se sequen las alfombras. Eso es son condiciones inhumanas para... porque ahí también viven niños. Entonces, yo les pido de la manera más atenta que haya control tanto de rentas como control en la inspección de estos lugares que son muy importantes y que somos la clase trabajadora muy importante para esta ciudad. Yo sé que ustedes están haciendo un magnífico trabajo porque la mantiene muy bella. Entonces, yo les agradezco por eso, pero también quiero que tomen en cuenta lo que yo les estoy pidiendo. Gracias.
Alex, can you please provide the translation for the speaker?
I'm sorry, but Gabriela is the one that is taking the turn right now. Will you ask her to please interpret?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriela, can you please provide the interpretation for the speaker?
I am here to, um, to represent all my community and all the workers that have been giving a lot of petitions regarding the very high rent that it... they have to pay so they can have a place to live. Also, the conditions where they are living, they are not good at all. So I would ask you to please have an inspection, to go look at the buildings, to make sure that it is, um, the, the, the quality of living is, uh, is good and in a good level for humans, because even myself, I'm living in a very bad situation because I was not even provided a refrigerator. Like, the one that they gave me, it had mold in it, so I had to buy my own. And so it would be very good if we can have an inspector come to inspect these buildings at least once a year. You know, we are a working-class people and that we maintain this city, and I know that you guys are doing a very good job maintaining this beautiful city, but I'm asking you to please take a look at this and, and help us because that besides that rent being extremely high, the conditions of these buildings are not good at all. You know, maybe we can have some time for all the tenants to come and testify for themselves, but at this time for them, it's very difficult because they're working, because they're very hard workers.
Thank you. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you're calling from a phone. Pastor Ronald Britt, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you so much to Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember, our City Manager. It's an honor to be here this evening. I got on to talk about the traffic up above San Pablo and General... Jim Moore Road. The light seemed to be favoring San Pablo when all the traffic going north and south, if my bearing is right, and you come down the hill and the light is, turns red and stays red for a long time, and then it'll turn green for the San Pablo and it goes on and on and on and on. And so I think it need to be looked into. They may have this sickness cross or something. If your traffic's going north and south, and that's the majority of the traffic, and at the top of San Pablo, it's only two or three cars every here, every now and then, will you please check that out and see that we can get that corrected? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. As we had a moment of silence, I would respectfully like to add a prayer, please. Dear Lord, we glorify you. Thank you for your sacrifice on the cross and allowing us to seek forgiveness as we surrender our lives to you, Jesus, and we can be in, serving you for the rest of our lives and be in heaven with you and the other born-again saints. Help us to know and do your will and follow the Bible in this meeting and in our lives during this week. Help support the Forty Days for Life. There's two more weeks. People praying in front of Planned Parenthood, two blocks away. Please stop the eugenics and the, uh, of the Margaret Sanger's team there. They have eliminated 18 million black babies over the past several decades, and this is, this is a tragedy, but that was her plan. She also helped give information to Adolf Hitler and his eugenics against the Jewish people and others. Thank you. Amen. Also, please consider contacting your senators to pass the continuing budget resolution and not punish the federal workers and where they get their pay dropped or furloughed, and help call Senator Padilla and Senator Schiff, and also make sure that this, they're one and a half trillion dollars supporting abortion and trans and non-citizens does not go through. Also, there's an important election coming up in, on the Fourth of November. Just a little information on that as we prepare for that. Basically, the voters are gonna decide on the Fourth of November if the state should toss its current congressional district map drawn by the state's Independent Citizen Commission or replace it with a new one that was drawn quickly in, in just a few days by the Democrats in Sacramento and the, uh, redistricting partners, and this would allow the Democrats to gain five seats and eliminate five Republican districts and gain five, and this would allow them to take over possibly even the House of Representatives in the United States, and this is called gerrymandering. When districts are redrawn, there was no Republicans in these meetings and no independents, as I understand, like the commission requires, and this would mean that instead of having nine representatives for Republicans in this state, there would only be possibly four, even though there's 40% of the vote went for a Republican presidential candidate. So please vote no, basically on... Thank you.
The caller ending in 9902, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. My name is Nina Beatty. Before I talk about the planned burn at Fort Ord, for those new to Seaside in this area, Fort Ord is a National Priorities List superfund site. Some say it's worse than Camp Lejeune. It's contaminated with toxic chemicals and compounds, including Agent Orange, herbicides, munitions, PFOS, TCE, carbon tetrachloride, chemical weapons, lead, and more. It's in the soil, the water, and outgassing into the air. The Army reported toxic plumes under the Sand Dollar Shopping Center, and recently within an area of Chartwell School Site was used for Army fire testing and is contaminated with carcinogenic PFOS. CSUMB is built on superfund land. Site 39, Fort Ord's most contaminated area, is the impact area where many types of munitions were fired and exploded for decades, and herbicide... herbicides were sprayed heavily to eliminate vegetation and leftover munitions buried in the ground, some deeply. Underneath Site 39 is the Seaside Groundwater Basin, where most of our drinking water comes from. Only one location on Site 39's fringe was sampled, and only for 10 substances and not the hundreds of other toxins used there. What's in our drinking water? CalM only conducts routine tests, not for these contaminants. Into the basin is now added treated sewage and industrial waste, pure water Monterey, to interact with the toxins already there. Fort Ord is a superfund site, not just a ghost town. The Fort Ord Dune State Park, soon to allow camping, is built on Fort Ord firing ranges with decades of lead dust, bullets, and toxic herbicides and chemicals. No warnings are posted because the state exempts itself from Prop 65 despite protests. The Fort Ord burned by the Army's plan soon, which will put these toxins into the air. MilitaryPoisons.org released a paper on the burn hazards and the dangerous toxins in the smoke. Its debris falls out. People get sick from the smoke and fall out, which the Army doesn't clean up, falling on schools, yards, and fields. Previously, the Army reported the chemical weapon acrylene in the air exceeding safe exposure levels. Those with COPD, asthma, emphysema, lung cancer, previous toxic exposure are most at risk, as are children. Fires have frequently gotten out of control, and the same agency that caused the contamination is conducting the burn, which will also kill wildlife. A soldier told his son, "Don't go to Fort Ord, and if you have to go, don't touch anything." I ask the city and the public to oppose the upcoming Fort Ord burn. Do everything in your power to stop it for the health and the safety of this community. Thank you.
Linda, you now have the floor to make your public comment. Linda, you now have the floor to make your public comment. Members of the public in the chamber, wishing to make public comment, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward, and the caller, Linda, is not responsive.
All right. Thank you so much. Seeing no one to hear, no one else, public comment is closed. Mr. City Manager, did you hear any questions, issues, or concerns you can answer at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There have been no permits issued to any development near Robert's Lake. Code enforcement wasn't made aware of that and is, is looking into that as of today. So there are no permits pulled for development near Robert's Lake on the City of Seaside's side. Secondly, the city obviously does not have a rental registry or a rental inspection, but we certainly encourage the feedback. There is a limited scope and window that the city can perform inspections for life safety matters. We encourage any resident to, to contact city staff, and we can see if there's anything we can do with any concerns they may have at this time. And then finally, the city staff will review the traffic signal timing of General Jim Moore and San Pablo.
I would just add to be, it can't be no more clear than a permit pull, but there's no expectations of any, any businesses building out there in Robert's Lake. Like we said earlier, that's in the coastal commission zone, and it's in our plan, and before anything like that would ever happen, let's be clear, I don't think the coastal commission let it happen. It would come before us, and we have a big discussion, but the council is not looking to put any type of businesses out there at Robert's Lake around that trail. There's supposed to be some improvements going to improve the, the trails and things of that nature, some major construction over there. We'll probably have that on agenda soon, but, uh, and, and then I would add that we, we did have, me and the City Manager did have a conversation with Mr. Daniels, Robert Daniels, yesterday about those concerns with habitability about the hemplas and the seabreeze, but when we're talking about a rental inspection and rental ordinances of that nature, that will affect the whole city, not just people in housing complexes. That will affect people in single-family homes and things of that nature. And so we will continue to do our best to help those that are not living in the best conditions, but at, at a certain level, those are county responsibility as it relates to health and safety, but the city will continue to respond to any emergencies, and we will continue to look how best to improve the lives of those that are renting, uh, housing units in this city, and all options remain on the table as we continue to collect information. Uh, thank you. Next, we go to number six, which is public agency communications. Seeing no one, we will go to 6A, Seaside City News and Broadcast.
Let's dip into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering more of the events happening this October. Join FOSPA on Saturday, October 18th at Havana Solis Park, and on the 25th at Mescal Neil Park for a day of service and outdoor fun. For more information, including future workdays and locations, visit FriendsOfSeasideParks.org. Palenque Arts proudly presents the Tiffany Austin Quartet, the Love Epic. Experience an evening of dynamic soulful jazz featuring both classic and original works. Join us Saturday, October 18th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Palenque Arts, located at 1713 Broadway Avenue in Seaside. Admission is $30. Brought to you by Palenque Arts, celebrating creativity and culture in our community. The Walter Lee Avery Gallery invites artists to participate in the Fall Art Competition. Presented by the City of Seaside, the exhibition runs from November 10th through January 7th. Registration is now open and closes October 18th. For details, visit bit.ly/2025fallart. It's that time of year again for Patullo's Pumpkin Plunge. Dive into the fun at the Patullo Swim Center on Saturday, October 18th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Enjoy free swimming, games, prizes, arts and crafts, and swim through our floating pumpkin patch. Pick a pumpkin to decorate and take home. Admission is free, and pumpkins are $7. A big thank you to Lucky and Safeway for your generous donations. For more information, call 831-899-6815. The City of Seaside invites you to the Harvest Festival at Pachetti Dog Park, a fun-filled community event for the whole family. Join us on Saturday, October 25th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 at the corner of Noche Buena and Kimball Avenue. Enjoy vendors, raffles, delicious food, and a dog costume contest. Judging begins at 1:00 p.m. with a $5 entry fee. Celebrate the season with your neighbors and furry friends at Pachetti Dog Park's Harvest Festival. Get ready, Seaside. The Halloween Bonanza is happening at the Old Meyer Center on October 31st from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Bring the whole family for free spooky fun. thirty-first from six to nine P. M. Bring the whole family for free spooky fun, including a haunted house, candy, game booths, crafts, and more. Don't miss this frightfully fun night for all ages. We'll see you there. Attention, Seaside drivers. As part of the Campus Town Construction Project, improvements are coming to the intersection of Light Fighter Drive and General Jim Moore Boulevard. Construction is expected to begin in November and will take about a year to complete. The work will happen in phases, so traffic will still move through the area, but drivers should expect changing traffic patterns and some delays along the way. Please drive carefully, follow posted signs, and stay alert for construction crews. Thank you for your patience as we work to improve Seaside's roadways. Construction alert. As part of the San Pablo Avenue Traffic Calming Project, San Pablo Avenue will be slurry sealed on Thursday, October twenty-third and Friday, October twenty-fourth between Mescal Avenue and General Jim Moore Boulevard. Parking will be restricted, and one-way traffic and detours will be in place. Drivers should anticipate delays. Please be advised. In advance of this year's rainy season, the city of Seaside has set up two sandbag filling stations for residents. The first filling station is located at the Seaside Fire Station at sixteen thirty-five Broadway Avenue, behind the station at the Broadway entrance. The second station is in the empty lot on Canyon Del Ray between Chili's Restaurant and Laguna Grande Park. Residents may take up to ten sandbags per household. Due to possible weather conditions and staff dispatching, city staff may not be available to assist with filling sandbags. For more information, contact the Public Works Department at eight three one eight nine nine six eight three five. Everyone's Harvest, in partnership with Farms Together, is offering free boxes of produce at the Seaside Farmers Market every Thursday. Please note that the new time for box distribution is four thirty P. M., so mark your calendars, and we'll see you out at Laguna Grande Park on Thursdays. We appreciate you tuning in to Seaside City News, where we work to include, innovate, and inspire. We'll be back with more exciting events to share with you this November. Until then, be safe, live fully, and enjoy all our city has to offer. Thank you, Seaside.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for that. Where is he in here? Where'd that scary voice come from? I mean, you know, isn't he trying, though? Isn't he trying to make sure the news is exciting? So I appreciate him for that. Item number seven, presentations. Seven A, August and September two thousand twenty-five House of the Month Awards. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This item will be presented by Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager, City Attorney and Staff. I am Dan Mewes, the Assistant City Manager, and I am also the staff liaison to the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. Tonight, we will be honoring those individuals that were selected for the House of the Month for August and September. And to do the presentations, I'd like to invite up the Chair of the Neighborhood Improvement Commission, Mr. Ray Riordan.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to tell you about the NIC real quickly, Neighborhood Improvement Commission. And what we do is, once a month, we drive around to one of us, and we drive around a neighborhood, and we pick a home, or about four or five homes, come back to the commission, and then we vote on one. And then that's how it's chosen. But we are always open to anybody to make a suggestion, bring it to the NIC, or call the mayor, or one of the council people, and just say, hey, check out this house. We'll be glad to do that, because, you know, some of them are hidden jewels. And so that's the ones. It's fun to do, and we appreciate it. Okay. So the first one? August twenty twenty-five, two twelve, Jetson. And Rosemary Goad, G O A D. She got the August one, and she'll also get a gift certificate of her choice anywhere in Seaside for how much? Fifty bucks for fifty dollars. She'll be glad to take anybody with her if you wish. Oh, yeah, sorry. And she'll receive a fifty dollar gift certificate also. Okay? Yeah. Okay. Then we have September twenty twenty-five, Five Maiden Circle, and this is presented to Richard Forster. Come on up. Is that your wife?
She's in Jersey.
Oh, okay.
You have your phone. I'll take your photo. You want to?
You want her to be part of the picture? So we drove around in your neighborhood and checked out all the homes, and you were the chosen one. And so we appreciate you taking care of your home and making it look as nice as possible, and it's great to see you participating in doing something for your neighborhood. And so we'd like to present you with this. It's a plot for House of the Month. I guess I should shake her. Congratulations. All right.
Here is your gift card for Ichirichi.
Ichirichi. Oh, is that where you want to eat, huh? I bought my home in nineteen eighty-one, and I'm up off of Mexico. I bought my home in eighty-one, and when Golden Gate Airlines was a commuter carrier based in Monterey Airport, headquartered there, and I've seen it grow from the Ford Ord, and there's such a pride of ownership. That's what I love about this area. And the neighbors are super, and I enjoy walking the trails, and I pick up a little plastic bag and pick up things, and I see others with that, and your park department. It's just great. And it's close to everything. I said when I moved back down here, the only reason I did was because Costco and Trader Joe's were within two or three miles of my home. Thank you again.
Thank you, Richard. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Next, we go to item number eight is the Consent Agenda. Eight A. Approval Minutes from October second, two thousand twenty-five Reglement Meeting. A B, approve a proclamation recognized in November eleventh as Veterans Day. C, approve a proclamation recognizing November fourth through the eleventh, two thousand twenty-five as Operation Green Light Week in support of veterans. A D, approve a proclamation recognized in November as American Indian Heritage Month. E, approve a environmental service cooperative agreement, report covering activities from July through September two thousand twenty-five. F, adopt a resolution authorizing agreement with Coastal Fabrications Inc. for a new ninety-inch storm drain outfall structure and installation in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and four cents, plus a twenty percent contingency. G, adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new Duckbill one-way valve from Lee Valley Valve LLC for the ninety-inch drain, storm drain outfall structure in the amount of eighty-two thousand, seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents, plus a fifteen percent contingency. That concludes the reading of the Consent Agenda. Is there any item that anyone from the DIES would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that someone from the public would like to pull off? Bringing it back to the DIES, well, as the will of the council.
Most of them do approve.
So they've probably moved in second. Tell you out the public comment. Public comment is open on our Consent Agenda.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. On the question, any question? All those in favor use the regular sign of voting, which is aye. Nays have the same right. Extentions? Ayes have it motion, care unanimously. Item number nine, business item nine A, approve a request from International School of Monterey for a donation of three thousand dollars from the Mayor Youth Fund for the costs associated with their after-school soccer program. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a presentation of Keon Higgins, our Recreation Superintendent.
Good evening, the mayor, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager, members of the public. My name is Keon Higgins, Recreation Superintendent, and I'm presenting item nine A, approve a request International School of Monterey of donation of three thousand dollars from Mayor Youth Fund for the cost associated with their after-school soccer program. So a bit of background. This is gonna click. All right. So the purpose of the Mayor Youth Fund, what's the background, the purpose of this program? It's to provide supplemental assistance to students and nonprofit groups, including schools, that provide services to improve the lives of young people in our community of Seaside. And who's eligible? Eligible applicants involve students and organizations based in Seaside, serving majority of residents of fifty percent and are eighteen years or younger or enrolled in high school. So the evaluation criteria, so what qualifies for this kind of program? Needs to be a number categories, scholastic activities, athletics, music, environmental sustainability, or art activities. And there'd be some sort of evidence as far as ensuring a healthy environment for our community, sustainability, you know, you see in the reuse, reuse, and recycle. So those categories, you want to make sure that the programs that are under the Mayor Youth Fund are really hitting those quadrants. So this is the requests from the International School of Monterey. They're requesting three thousand dollars for their after-school soccer program. This program is pretty unique. It's a non-competitive co-ed soccer league. Each student, they're not going to be cut, opportunity to play, have fun, learn about teamwork, athletics, school, and working with others, and obviously their coaches and their families. And you'll see on here a few pictures, their girls' team, you'll see later, boys' team. So and the aim of this program is to make sure that the students are prepared for high school athletics, so they want to prepare these students as they move on to the next phase of their education. So how are they eligible? So again, they're going to be, they're based in Seaside, so they're also a school. The number of student athletes are going to be serving is around fifty students, ages eleven to fifteen, over fifty percent. So you'll see on here, it's sixty-five percent of the students that are on the soccer team that are based in Seaside. And the criteria, it's the athletic category. So how does this align with the Mayor's Youth Fund? So scholastic impact, it's a school here in Seaside. Environmentally, they're going to practice stewardship as far as we're using reusable water bottles and sorting waste in appropriate waste bins. And they're also going to encourage the athletes and their families to practice sustainability when they're frequenting their games, practices, and so forth. So their funding use, what are they going to, what are they doing with this funding? They hope to do. They want to create fields and locations. It can include fields in Seaside to Katino, but they're open to anything. We're trying to figure that out. They want to hire certified referees. In the past, they've used parents, volunteers, but they want to make sure that the students they have on their team are getting the best referees for soccer. And of course, they're also going to have supplemental funding. So in the past, they've had families on a team buy jerseys, coaching stipends, operation costs. And I think from last year, they might have spent over a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, and they want to hopefully do that again with, of course, with tonight's request. So I do want to note, in your packet, there is an incorrect number. Here is the correct number. So currently, the balance is forty-four thousand dollars, one hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. With this request, International School of Monterey, it's going to be three thousand dollars, which will reduce it to forty-one thousand dollars, one hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. So recommendation tonight is approve a request from International School of Monterey for donation of three thousand dollars from the Youth Fund for the cost associated with their after-school soccer program.
Is there another correction you want to make up there? I know that's not, that may just be me, but I'm not sure.
The School of Monterey.
Still three thousand dollars? I mean, it looks a little bit more, but.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, it should be three, three, comma, zero, zero, zero. Zero, zero. Thank you, sir.
Want to make sure when we leave here, we didn't give them.
Two thousand dollars.
Slide.
Yes, thank you.
If that goes through. Other question, Mayor Lieutenant?
Thank you. When I drove by the school and walked on it, I could tell the field is not healthy to play as far as the grass. So and I appreciate that. But in the report, the way I read it, it just mentioned to, basically, they were going to rent the fields from the city of Seaside. And then tonight, I see that it's to be inclusive of referees. It has been tweaked since that moment, since the writing of that?
There's been additional updates from the applicant who is here tonight. So after getting the report submitted in by our appropriate deadline, I tried to contact the coach. They were on school break last week, so they're doing their thing. So after, you know, we talked this week, I confirmed a few other details as far as what it's being used for. So besides Katino, and, you know, so I got updated details in the presentation, which is different than the packet.
Right. So we're not sure if they're going to be using, you know, five percent, not at all, or?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And then my other question, and just to be clarified, I'm supportive of this, but just forty-five or forty percent or forty, thirty percent of the kids come from other areas because it's a standing establishment. Have they received grants? Have they been seeing it from budget from other agencies? Or this is a sole goal, and we're going to pay the bill? Not okay. I'm just asking.
I do not know, but the applicant can't answer that question for you. I believe he's here.
That's my only two questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Garcia is on.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. I guess I would like, can everyone hear me okay? I feel like this is low. So in the program request, I see here that you're outlining practice environmental stewardship, such as using reusable water bottles and sorting waste in appropriate bins. Is the money going to that? Or like, what is the linkage? I didn't see.
So part of the requirement for the Mayor Youth Fund is how are they going to contribute to a sustainable environment? So part of this, they want, regardless of their request, they want to practice this within their program. So and the criteria from the Mayor Youth Fund for the policy is that there needs to be some sort of component as far as within this, besides whether it's school, or scholastic, or sports, or arts, what else are we going to do to commit to a sustainable environment in Seaside?
If I'm not mistaken, you said last year, they spent a thousand dollars?
I think around there. I was getting some estimates from him. So they got funding or donations last year that could happen this year. So they're currently getting signups this week. I think he was telling me that they're getting registration forms this week. So he's not entirely sure as far as what he could receive this year. It's more so an approximation.
And it was a thousand dollars for what exactly?
From when I go back here. This is not working here. Jerseys, coaching stipends. So I think with the request for the field use, they want to get referees. So last year, I was told that they spent money for jerseys and then hiring coaching or even referees as well.
Okay. And when they, the requested funds will support secure fields, locations, would that be outside of our community or just within?
It could be either. They're based in Seaside. I think they want to be in Seaside. So Katino Park is one of our most popular fields. That could be something they're considering. But that'd be something the applicant can answer.
Okay. Thank you.
The councilmember Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. I think I've asked before, but on this, on this item is under our business items, and sometimes they're under our consent agenda items. Is it because this is a new, a new program to us to fund the Mayor Youth Fund request?
To us. So the school has done a number of requests before, but for this particular after-school soccer program, this is a new request.
So we have, the city council has approved international school funds, mayor youth funds for different sport programs at the school?
Yes, yeah, after school, correct, but not for this sport.
So every time there's a new sport, then that?
Different kind of program.
Say it again.
Different kind of program.
I see. So that's what triggers it to go on the business item instead of the consent agenda?
Correct.
That was all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Berks?
So just going back to the recycling, is that separate, is it a separate program from, like, we're mandated to do in schools?
Just move.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, is it separate from what all schools are required to do now? Like, we have to separate our trash out, like that is, or is there, is it a different program that they're doing? Or is that just part of, of using recyclable or reusable water bottles? And then they're committed to doing what's required for the schools?
We're trying to emphasize that within this particular after-school program. And the, the person who applied for this is like, kind of the sports coordinator, coach, and I think his, um, kind of mission for this is to make sure that component is there regardless. I'm not entirely sure. He can answer that for you, uh, but they want to emphasize that for this, uh, soccer program.
Yeah, I'm supportive, but I have a couple of concerns. I mean, um, you know, we should know exactly what the component about recycle, reduce, and reuse is. That's, that's, that's the sticking point. That's the requirement right there. And it's a little bit more than just, uh, we're gonna reuse, recycle bottles, right? And then the waste component, it really, it did, really didn't expand on anything for me. So, uh, and then the part about, uh, some of the money may go for stipends, which we normally don't do. Uh, pay, we don't pay people. And then, and then the other one was particularly for, some of this money may be used to pay us to rent out Catino. And so I have concerns with that, you know, for uniforms, you know, soccer balls, stuff like that. You know, some poor kids that, you know, can't afford shoes, then, then, then I'm all for that. So I'm supportive of that. It's just how do we frame this, uh, uh, the right way? And, and that's little, that's a segue for the applicant when they come up to be able to answer those type of questions and concerns. Anyone else? Yes.
Part of the after-report, don't think, do they, do they submit a report for what their expenditures are? Because right now I tend to, uh, if that is true, right now the money is kind of, here's three thousand dollars without any really clarity. So is there an after three thousand? I thought there was.
Typically is, yeah. It could be more detailed as far as the reports, uh, but there is something like, at the end of it, hey, you know, a recap, and then the use of, uh, the funds towards, you know, their proposed, um, application that they gave us, yeah.
I'm making this up, fifteen hundred dollars for balls, fifteen hundred dollars for soccer fields.
Well, let me, let me jump in there. I, I think that was a good question, but I, I don't think the, the after-action report uh, details those things, right? And so that's why we're gonna clarify it tonight. And so, uh, you know, we're looking for, you know, this to be used for, um, jerseys, soccer balls, and things of that nature, uh, and then, you know, other donations can pay for stipends and, and then, uh, I guess we could continue to figure out how do we, uh, support the rental of Catino? I don't, I don't know about that. Uh, yes, go ahead.
I, I do just to clarify, so on this current slide, their funds on, on their application and, uh, agenda packet, they want to use these funds strictly for finding a field location for games, practices, and then hiring referees. In the past, they've used donations for stipends, for coaching stipends. They might do it again for this year, but that's for their own separate funding outside of the request tonight.
Right, I'm glad you clarified that. I, I, I do, you know, okay, the Mayor's Youth Fund is for one thing, but, but the question about how they get the use of soccer fields is, is, is a different area. That's the, uh, red departments and the city managers, uh, but I know Catino is already maxed out, I would imagine. Okay, there's no other questions. Uh, is there any questions for the, uh, the applicant? Yeah, whoever the applicant is, is the representative, could they come on down, please?
Uh, good evening, council. Good evening, residents.
Yeah, I think the question just was surrounding, what would, uh, the three thousand dollars be used for? And then how would you speak to instilling more recycle, reduce, and reuse beyond, uh, using, uh, reusable plastic bottles or reusable bottles, things of that nature? So the end just goes towards, how would you use the money?
Sure, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I am a first-year A.D. for ISM. I haven't even, even completed a full cycle of sports yet. I came on late last year because we were about to lose our program. Um, from my experience, as was mentioned previously, we rely heavily on family volunteers, community members to volunteer their time, um, to come and officiate our games, which is great when it works out. Um, but historically, we've not always seen it work out. Um, again, as a short-time A.D., I've seen many matches be canceled, many games be canceled, and a lot of bad calls. Um, and my number one job is an educator, coach, athletic director, is to make sure my students are safe. Um, so when I step on that field, and we do share the field, that wonderful field with, uh, MLK, King Middle, King Middle School, um, it is not in the best condition currently, ground squirrels, gophers, you name it, um, just tearing up our students' ankles. And, uh, so along with securing funds to help pay for the fees to rent out the fields per hour, um, for both practices if possible, and our games, our matches, um, hiring officials that can help ensure an extra layer of safety for our athletes. Um, again, it's, it's one of the hardest things as a coach to see my kids try their hardest at every practice, show up to every game on time, and went to forfeit, forfeit or cancel a match because there's no one to help secure and make it safe for them. Um, additionally, I'm out there with a wheelbarrow and whatever sand I can accumulate in that wheelbarrow, filling these holes and making sure my students aren't rolling their ankles, families aren't rolling their ankles. And that, that would be the primary reason for the cost. Um, on average, uh, an official here, um, through one of the organizations, costs roughly seventy-five dollars to, uh, seventy-five dollars an hour, um, or seventy-five dollars a game or match. This volleyball season alone, I had five teams, sixty students that we support. As mentioned, we don't do any cuts, no tryouts. Every student receives a jersey, receives that equity in practice and in games. That will apply to my soccer season as well. We'll re-anticipate currently, from the top of my head, I've signed fifty documents because we do our grade checks before they step foot on the field. We're at fifty right now. Um, so ensuring that each one of the students have a jersey that's intact, making sure that we have a safe field for them to practice on, to play on, and again, some sort of efficient that can help make sure the games run smoothly.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I think, you know, when you talked about the jerseys and stuff, like I said, it, it, it made a lot of sense to me. And could you speak to, uh, how are you gonna encourage them to recycle, reduce, and reuse?
Sure. Um, so part of our, we follow the IB curriculum at our school. Um, and so part of that is, and it's an interdisciplinary approach to the way we facilitate our classes. I am also the middle school P.E. teacher, and I incorporate things like science and math into my classes, physics. Um, I do a whole unit based on trying trick shots and applying different scenarios of how they design, practice, redesign, practice, and implement. And so part of that, again, working with our seventh grade and eighth grade science teacher, who's currently in the middle of preparing for science fair, uh, we're trying to push for more sustainability on campus. Um, again, as I, as I teach P.E. and I'm a first year, I'm sorry, second year at this point, P.E. teacher, um, my area, when I first came on the blacktop, completely covered in trash every day. Um, and it's up to our custodial staff to clean up. And within the semester alone, we've really been trying to push with our students to make sure they're reducing, reusing, recycling, throwing the trash in the appropriate receptacles, same with their recycling, and we even have green bins on campus as well. Um, as a former hippie myself, I'm pushing for reusable water bottles and making sure that students don't leave their trash on the fields. Again, as we're out of respect for the facilities we're using, whether it's our own, the city's, or another team's, um, we are making a push for more sustainable efforts using those types of materials.
Uh, thank you so much. Any other?
Just one. What are you doing beyond seemingly the curriculum? So it seems like you're gonna do this no matter what. We're giving you three thousand dollars to do something beyond what you're already doing. Are you gonna do anything because you potentially will receive this grant that's beyond what you're already doing?
Sure, I mean, in, in an ideal world, um, if we were to secure this funding, um, next week when I get the schedule for our season, I'll have a greater idea of what games we're responsible for hosting at home. So again, the cost of fields, officiants, things like that, and I'd love to apply for some sort of, uh, not, sorry, not apply for, but receive some sort of, um, water bottles or some sort of systems I can establish with my teams, right? So whether it's a portable water cooler that I bring, I currently have nothing like that. Again, my students show up with their eight-ounce, twelve-ounce water bottles, leave it in the trash, recycling, and we go from there. But if I can secure something for the, the, the long-term future of my teams where I can provide that kind of water resource or, um, reusable resources for that team, uh, again, in an ideal world, I'd have that funding.
Uh, Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, how many games are in a season?
Uh, for our league, um, we just finished a, I believe it was fourteen or fifteen-game season for volleyball. Um, depending on how many signups I have for this upcoming season, again, I'll, I'll find out more tomorrow afternoon. Um, with fifty students, we have roughly eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve games, and?
For, for one, for each team, I apologize. So for twenty, or sixteen to twenty-four games for the whole season for co-ed.
Right. When I was, uh, when I was in high school, I, I was a soccer referee, and, uh, it was, it was a pretty fun time in my life. I enjoyed it, and, and, uh, soccer is refereed with three. And so are you planning to have three referees at every game?
Ideally, at least one. Um, again, uh, historically, we've had a tough time finding the commitment, but if we were able to afford the officiants here in the area, we would push for at least two. And then myself, now that we've, uh, just hired a second coach using, again, contributions from our families, I can be out there and helping to officiate if need be.
Because it seems like at seventy-five, even at one, and you play eight to ten, eh, eight to twelve games, you're at, you know, seven, six hundred, eight hundred per team. So can you break down the three thousand? Is it half going to uniforms and half going to the referees? Are you able to break that down for us, or?
Sure. Um, I mean, again, with that, with that grant, if we were to receive the full sum, it does open up a lot of potential for us, whether it's helping to provide, um, with the jerseys, I'll touch on that. So we do not have families buy the jerseys. We provide jerseys as a, um, a rental for every, every student, every season. And so with that come the damaged jerseys, the needing to replace jerseys. I just need, I had, I just recently bought, uh, twelve brand-new jerseys because we're at, um, a deficit. We had sixty-eight kids in the volleyball program, and we didn't have enough. So we just recently purchased a whole bunch, and then depending on how many soccer numbers we actually end up having, we may have to purchase more. Um, I, I know it's kind of a, sorry, a tough answer. I, depending on the sum awarded, how many students I have out there, again, it does open the, the, the gates for field usage, for officiants, for jerseys, for potentially buying some sort of sustainable water resource for my students.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia Zoll?
Thank you. And, and I heard jerseys, but if I'm reading that correctly, jerseys are included in supplemental funding. So do you have jerseys, or do you not have jerseys, I guess? That's my question.
So for this, again, for the current time, we, we had enough jerseys for my volleyball players. Um, depending on, again, once I find out which amount of jerseys have been damaged, or lost, or otherwise just not returned in a equitable state for my students, we may end up having to buy more jerseys. Um, the company that we've been working with requires a minimum of twelve jerseys to be placed in, in an order. Uh, does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, uh, Mayor Potem?
Just real quick, if I heard the mayor correctly, and, and I apologize if I did, he's, and apologize to me, it should go for jerseys, uh, balls, nets. That's the area that, rather than supplementing or renting facilities. I think that's what I heard. Can you adjust the funds to, to fit in that smaller round, right? Rather than supplementing referees or whatever, is that feasible?
Most definitely, sir. So, um, oh, should I elaborate? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Uh, a- as the P.E. teacher as well, um, myself in the middle school, one of the teacher for the, for the primary years program, um, we share all of our equipment with the athletics department. And so whatever equipment is returned in whatever state, that's what we use for after-school department, or after-school sports program as well. So again, our equipment is pretty battered, it's pretty torn up. Um, we primarily use our blacktops to ensure the safety of our students, so it's not kind to our soccer balls, um, if you can imagine. So if, again, we had the funds, we could buy new equipment, one for every student as opposed to what we're currently doing, one for every two or three students. So this, this would open a lot of avenues for us.
Uh, anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, council.
Uh, public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
I didn't come to speak about this, but, um, hello, mayor, council. Um, you know, let me tell you something. When we invest in youth sports, we're investing in the heartbeat of our community. This isn't about the games or the trophies. It's about our kids, their confidence, their health, their future. Every time a young person laces up their shoes and steps out onto the field, on the court, they're learning teamwork, leadership, resilience, lessons that last a lifetime. When we fund youth sports, we're not just building athletes, we're building citizens. We're giving kids a reason to show up, to dream big, to stay focused, and off the streets. And when our youth thrive, our city thrives, families gather, businesses grow, pride shines. I'm a little embarrassed to learn that we can't even have our kids play on one of our fields because it can roll an ankle because there're squirrel holes in the ground. We're sitting here quibbling about whether or not we're gonna spend this three thousand dollars on jerseys or a field or a coaches, and this man is up here saying he lets every single person play. He had sixty-eight kids in the volleyball team, and he's reusing jerseys. He's doing this after school, so he's working at the school and then doing all this stuff after school? And we're quibbling about three thousand dollars so they can get jerseys and equipment and have a field where the kids aren't gonna get injured on the field? Are we kidding me right now? Honestly, we should be embarrassed that there are fields with holes. We should be embarrassed that there's fields with holes. If we have to pay to go somewhere else, that's our fault. What are we gonna do to fix the field? We have the, we have these park people. Why don't we ask them to fix the fields for us? So I, I just, I'm shocked, honestly, shocked, and thank you for your work with all these students. So let's be clear, investing in youth sports isn't an expense. It's a promise. A promise the city believes in its young people, because when we lift our youth, we lift the entire community. And the Mayor's Youth Fund is for that. Our mayor has always invested in our youth. So let's not quibble about where we're gonna use the money. Let's make sure they have a field to play in. Let's make sure that every person has a jersey. Maybe someone can figure out how to get them some reusable water bottles. I mean, let's work to help ensure that all of these students have a best place to be. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dice, what is the will of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve it in a second, second.
It's been properly moved on the second, Mayor Potem?
Just briefly, that is, that's what make it really clear. That is not city property. That is school district property. MPUSD is responsible for the fields. I think that's, needs to be understood. I think also, this council, I can't speak for all of you, but I think I can at least, in concept, we're always for youth, but there is a scope of the program, and we're trying to stay within the scope of the program. That's the objective. Uh, and we are mandated, I think, by green waste to, for their donation, that they follow the guidelines as far as giving back, as far as the recycle. That is not our rules. That is the rules of the money, where the money is coming from. So this council, I believe, has always been for youth programs, but there's also the scope and responsive ability, and the clear point is, that's why I went into the school, to see how bad the shape the schools are in, and that field especially. But that belongs to the MPUSD or that's a charter. But that belongs to the MPUSD or that's a charter school. And it's not a city's a hundred percent. It should be a cooperative event. And that's we try to be inclusive rather than the sole provider for everything. Cannot be the city. We cannot afford to do that. So I just wanted to clarify that if that for my benefit and hopefully some of you might agree or disagree.
Anyone else? Yeah, let me, let me just, uh, I agree with you a hundred percent that, um, I'm not going to denigrate the field, but those fields don't belong to us. They belong to a school district. And I've been with the mayor pretend, we've been trying to go in partnership with the school district for the last couple of years to try to figure that out, but it's very expensive. And it's on them to take a leadership role and, and fix those, uh, fields as their board determines that priority. And so that's the conversation people need to have with that school board about those fields. Uh, but the city seaside stands ready to party, I mean, partner with them, uh, to improve them uh, as much as we can. And those conversations are always ongoing. Uh, and I want to thank that, that, that gentleman for coming up, coming up then and, and asking. And like the mayor pro temp said, some of those things around recycle, reduce and reuse, we have to ask to, to, because that's the, um, commitment we made with the, with the waste hauler to, to ensure that those things are highlighted. Um, but, um, I'm comfortable with the jerseys and things of that nature. So there's no other concerns. I think the avenue is open for, uh, what you believe is the best use of that. No one is going to come in and, and say, give us a rundown on how you spent necessarily. Right? Okay. All those in favor, you just run the sound voting, which is I.
I.
Now you have the same right abstentions. Here now, I have emotion carry unanimously. Nine, be review and discuss the twenty twenty-five community social service grant applications, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This item will be presented by Assistant City Manager Dan Melew.
Evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Dan Melew, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to present the social service grant applications. So a little bit of background on this program. Um, it was established in twenty twenty, um, following the murder of George Floyd. This was one of the council's, um, priorities on how to uh, kind of give back to the community. Um, it supports local organizations providing social education and health-related services. With the hopes to, um, enhance quality of life through programs that address key community needs. Um, it is a one-time grant funding opportunity with annual budget allocation, which we have done over the past five years. Um, that cost has fluctuated over the past five years. It started at, at one number. It's gone up, it's gone down. And this year we are at, um, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Part of the application process is the applicants need to demonstrate, um, a ten percent match. It can be cash or in kind. And, um, all eligible applications should, must be nonprofits or, and community-based organizations. The areas of focus for this program are education, youth development, recreation programs, social work and public health. Could be elder care, mental health, homelessness prevention, housing advocacy, community building, and then safety and neighborhood restorations. This program does, um, align with our strategic plan, um, that the council adopted recently, um, and all five of the pillars. So effective accessible governance, um, by developing cooperative, uh, collaborations and partnerships. By vibrant local economy, whereas we work to advance the workforce, um, within the community through those, um, variety of, of programs. Um, diverse inclusive, uh, community expands cultural programming and it also fosters greater civic engagement. And then in our pillar five, community safety and quality of life, enhance public safety, crime reduction and emergency preparedness. So staff, uh, received all the applications and for the review process, we have, like I mentioned before, a hundred, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, that was allocated in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. We released the application and they were due on September eighteenth. We received twenty-two of those applications and the total funding request was one million and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and three dollars. And staff reviewed all the applications for eligibility and completeness. So for the council's consideration, some suggested, uh, key evaluation criteria, um, is the urgency and importance of the community need. The number and demographics of residents that would be served. The organizational capacity and past performance. Funding leverage opportunities and the cost effectiveness of and sustainability of everyone's programs. On this side here, you'll see the list of the twenty-two organizations that have applied. Um, they range from um, art council all the way to variety of churches and, um, meals on wheels, providing food. There's just a variety of, of wonderful community programs that have applied here. So the recommendation is for the council to review and discuss the social services grant applications and provide funding allocations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any, any questions, uh, Mayor Portem?
I'm gonna, I said, I'm gonna set this up with the comment we talked about. I talked to former Councilman Campbell and I also talked to a former member of the ad hoc committee when that was the process. Who was responsible to make recommendations to the council, the, uh, ad hoc. I remember and all three of us remembered that to our best of our knowledge, that it was designed during the George Floyd timeframe. And it was also designed in relationship to, um, defunding the police officers and providing an alternative. Rather than spending so much money on police, it could provide social services and, and therefore uh, save on the additional or more money for police officers. That was the, as I recall, the, the, um, concept, as well as the other two people I spoke to. So I believe it was meant for, and this is my opinion, was to uplift youth, provide mentoring, assist with mental health with a goal of moving young people forward in a lifestyle that's positive. Be proactive with youth and guide them towards creative opportunities and experiences. That's what I recall as well as the other two. Many of the, all of the applications are essential services. I, I have no doubt that they provide positive things. Is there, did, did we interpret this wrong? Uh, and I know many of the staff weren't around at that time. Or is it there been a change in philosophy to, to broaden the perspective, I guess is, I guess that's my question.
Thank you for the question. And this process has, has evolved in the five years. And so the, the current application that we received was based off the original RFP that was submitted back in twenty twenty. So it has a lot of the key elements that was provided there. And so a lot of the, the organizations that, that have submitted applications do fall within those buckets. You know, there, there are some that provide a lot of, if I go back to the slide. You go back to this slide here, all of the applicants fit within this, this focus. And which was a primary focus within the beginning of the, of the the grant application that, that first year, while we were focusing on keeping individuals and, and helping the police department. One could say that all these areas do help in that, in that, um, goal of keeping, working against, you know, keeping the police officers from addressing some of these situations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia is all.
Thank you. Um, and, and thank you for the presentation. Before I actually provide my insights, I, I do just want to do a disclaimer. I currently serve as volunteer, uh, director on the Board of the Arts Council for Monterey, which is currently someone that applied for city funding. Um, and although my role is uncompensated and does not create financial interest under the Political Reform Act, I believe I can remain impartial in voting on all funding applications. So just wanted to put that disclaimer for the sake of transparency that I am an uncompensated volunteer board member for the Arts Council of Monterey. And again, I believe I can do my job impartially.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I actually have the, uh, same disclosure here, um, since I serve on the board for community, uh, human services. And I am a director and I am a volunteer director and they have applied in this process. And I am not compensated in my role as a board member from them. And it does not create a conflict of interest with financially, uh, and it does not, uh, have a, any implication with the Political Reform Act, and I can be fair and impartial in this hearing. That was my disclosure and then I'm ready for my comments when, if now is a nice time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So to, to the, back to the original, uh, when we started this in twenty twenty, right? That was twenty twenty. Can you walk me through every year, like in twenty twenty, did the staff, uh, vet these? We have an ad hoc committee. I remember there being a committee that, that went through the process. Was that all of the past years or?
No. So for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there wasn't that hot committee. And it was, there was a variety of different iterations with that ad hoc committee that, that took place. Um, an RFP process was released, applications were submitted and then the ad hoc committee reviewed those, um, applications. The, um, then the top ranking scores or all the scores came back to the city council with the top allocations. And then the city council discussed that during, um, open session to find out who would be funded. In twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, allocations were, were, um, provided during the budget cycle and during the budget hearings. And then the city council directly allocated funding at that point. And there was no application process. Um, it was, the funding was allocated there. Twenty twenty-five, we're here, we, um, provided a one-page trying to streamline the process a little bit. Added a one-page application, released it out to the public for submission. And so now here we are, uh, bringing all the applications to the city council for review.
So in twenty-five's budget, we just allocated the four hundred and twenty thousand and we didn't say who we would reward it to is that?
During the budget, correct. So in our current budget cycle, it was allocated in the budget and now we're here reviewing the applications.
Two years prior, the prior two years, that the decision of who would get the funding was decided at the, uh, the budget.
Correct.
Okay. Because, you know, this, we have twenty-two applicants. I mean, I'm very worthy, great community organizations, so proud of all of them. And, and but, I, I mean, I really, it, it, it's, it's just difficult for me to, with such a large number and the different asks, it's different, it's difficult for me to, this is why I was kind of thinking, you know, in the future, how, how does, how do we as this council see going, moving forward? Are we going to go back to the ad hoc committee, uh, system? Or are we going to have this day in the future? I know that's not what we're here to discuss today, but uh, in the future, I'm, I'm curious to know how we plan to, because this is a lengthy, you know, a lengthy process and, and I, I mean, I think that, you know, the, that there might, we might benefit from having an ad hoc committee that really scores these, looks at them, them carefully, even though, you know, I, I, we, I believe we all have read it and we all understand the requests and asks, but, um, I mean, I would like to see a group that we look, look through these more thoroughly and, and, uh, bring their recommendations. That's just my preference, but, um, uh, those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? The, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think we did an ad hoc committee, uh, this time. And you kind of confused me about the last couple of times because I wasn't sure. I, I had, it was just what your ass just confused me a little bit, but we didn't do an ad hoc, well, I want to start with this question. The times that we did do an ad hoc committee and, and they scored it, they ranked them and they used the criteria that the ad hoc committee came up with. And they scored in and ranked them and they turned them into the council. Did the council ever award grants as recommended by that ad hoc committee without changes?
I, I believe the ad hoc committee, the, the recommendations that was submitted by the ad hoc committee was approved by the council. I can't re, I can't remember if there was any changes, um, from the dais.
Okay, I could, I would, I would ask the, the mayor pro temp. Did we ever not make changes?
My, and I confirmed it today. Uh, my memory is and to be very blunt.
What just answered this?
The answer is yes, we made changes, uh, as we do with the NIC. It's a, it's the same kind of thing. The council, it comes with the recommendations, the council made changes. I can say that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and that's my recommend, rec, that's what I remember, right? Uh, because at the end of the day, it's a, it's a each individual council member's decision about what level we want to fund and do we believe that organization should be funded, right? And so that's, that's not at you. What I'm getting to is that's why we didn't have an ad hoc committee this time. Because I didn't think it was fair to have staff time rank these organizations by the curriculum that they come up with and then the council disregard those recommendations, right? And then the recommendations from the ad hoc committee tend to, uh, um, be swayed towards organizations that are longstanding. Cause you start off with your experience, your ability to spend the funds and all that. And then all of a sudden, it's only certain people that get awarded money. And so that's, that's what my recommend, uh, regulation is that we always change the recommendation and it didn't seem fair to have staff go through that one more time. Uh, the council is going to work as well. Uh, they should be very, uh, well-informed to vote money out to different organizations that they feel should have it, uh, without someone telling them you, this group got ninety and this group got eighty-nine. And so you got to fund the night, the group that had number ninety. Right? We all know better than, it's not really to you. That's, this is to the ether. And so what I would like to do is, uh, uh, I, I think that, you know, the council should hear from those that are present, that are applicants. But we still have to hear from, uh, public comment. Uh, but, uh, I think we should do that and, and let people say, uh, what they want to say. Again, uh, the RFP went out, for those that you are not part of RFP, the RFP went out uh, talking about this grant, saying that applicants could be fully funded, partially funded or not funded at all. So some people are going to, uh, uh, be, be in this process where they don't get no funding possible. I don't know, but that's from zero all the way to a hundred. And we shall all be clear on that. Um, but let me say this, so I won't have to say it at the end. Like the mayor pro temp said, this money is money that the council tries to put aside to push back in the community. Uh, it's not going to be pushed back perfectly as people think it should be, uh, because it's a collective of us. But this was the commitment that we started, uh, from the George Floyd, uh, murder, as I call it, uh, to try to push back money back into, um, uh, things affecting the youth, uh, primarily. And so with that said, we'll, we'll start. And we'll just, uh, go from there. So we'll open up to the, the applicants. I think we already have your, um, application, of course. Uh, I'm sure everyone has read your application, so I will, uh, just allow, uh, two minutes just to reaffirm your requests and your, and your thoughts on it. Uh, it shouldn't take three minutes to tell us you want money and how worthy you are. Right? And so, uh, you know, and I think we'll probably do the same with, uh, public comment at two minutes. So we'll start with the applicants, uh, first and yeah, we'll, 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 uh, what we'll do is we'll, uh, allow the, uh, uh, city clerk to, I guess, go down the list alphabetical. That'd probably be, uh, the best way. And then, uh, if you're not here, let me say this, for the, um, the organizational agencies that are not here, you got, the organizations that are not here, you still will be fully considered. Right? Even though you're not in a room, you still will be fully considered. Uh, so don't think you have to be here. Don't think you have to come down and say anything. Even if you're still in the room, you don't have to come down and say anything. You still will be fully considered because we have your application and it's not about, um, just being here. Uh, it's not, it's not one of those closed mouth, don't get fed type things. You don't, your application is in, the council is looking at it and they will consider it. Uh, city clerk.
Action council.
I don't think it's, is ever, never, not.
I don't think it's, is ever never not nervous, but, um, we're here. And so, um, thank you again for this opportunity. Um, our youth, part of Seaside Rising Youth Leadership Academy, were actually the youth that, um, were very voice, like their voices were very loud and bold during the time of the George Floyd murder. And so they were, I want to say the influence possibly for this, uh, particular grant. Um, we have been serving this community, our youth have been in leadership position to serve this community for several years now. Um, and our goal is to always make sure that they retain, um, as residents. We want to make sure that they are the next city council members. We want to make sure that they are taking over the jobs. Um, and we do that with throughout the curriculum that we serve, throughout the, um, activities that we provide. Um, we are also looking to engage more into STEM this coming year. Um, because we know that that is the innovative way to go. We know that that is the future. Um, and we want to make sure that our youth have a fighting chance in this economy. Um, we also do, so we were initially doing eight week academy, but we actually have expanded to do the entire year because our youth deserve more time. They deserve to be, uh, full, uh, what is it? All year round. Um, we do a lot of, uh, advocacy. They do a lot of city work. They do a lot of, um, work in the schools. Um, is there anything you want to say? Yes. No, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm one of the youth, so we make sure that we talk about everyday things. So community engagement, civic engagement, mental health, things that we know that are trending topics or curriculums that matter to us in this generation, you know, all generations, but yeah.
Um, bullying as well. Uh, we're trying to get our youth more engaged in drug prevention. Um, and also a lot of our youth that have graduated and moved on to college, they actually come back and volunteer. Um, a lot of you attend our youth summit in December and you see the impact that we make. And so that serves over 200 something families. Um, and we want to invite you out again this year, December 20th. We only had two minutes, but I hope that helps.
That was quite a bit. No, I don't have no questions for you.
Okay.
Uh, that's quite a bit. Two minutes is quite a bit. Uh, no, you, you guys are done.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just letting, I'm just letting everybody know two minutes is quite a bit to say how wonderful you are. And we have your, we have your application, so don't think, don't think, you know, you need three minutes to, to tell us, you know? Uh, you guys are doing great. Who's next?
All in Monterey County.
And then I won't, I won't make any more comments after the public, but I just want everybody to know that we have your application.
All in Monterey County. Arts council. Bethel Baptist Church.
Community council. What can I say? Actions speak louder than words. The proof is in the pudding. Um, the ministry has been established here for over 20 plus years. Um, by my father, Herbert Hoover Senior, which, um, longstanding member and advocate for Seaside. He passed away in 2018. Um, and the mantle was passed to me. Um, then COVID hit, um, Bethel Missionary Baptist Church and Hoover Ministries feeding program and, uh, safe parking program, um, then was considered an essential, an essential entity in the Monterey County. Uh, we were open, we were open three days, actually five days a week, serving food from Monday through Sunday. Um, providing parking for those that did not have a place to park at night, providing, um, for a year and actually it was six months to individuals to sleep in a tent. Um, we requested because the know, we know what we do, how we do it and the needs that we meet. Um, just served 150 hot meals today, um, served 121 on Tuesday. Um, our numbers are, they speak for themselves. They're in your packet. Um, during COVID, we had over 35,000 hot meals come out of our church based upon the support of the city of Seaside, the council, the mayor. Um, so like I said, um, we're here, we've requested it. Um, I believe that, that our proof is in what we do. Thank you.
Community Human Services.
Good evening, mayor. Um, my name is Anab, uh, grants manager from Community Human Services. I just wanted to thank you all for your previous support, um, in funding our Casa de Noche Buena, emergency shelter for unaccompanied homeless women and families with children. Um, and we look forward to, and we thank you so much for the opportunity to apply this year. Our emerge, um, Casa de Noche Buena was the, was Monterey Peninsula's first emergency shelter for women and families. Um, and we, it's the highest growing, um, priority population of homeless, um, individuals and the services, the need for the services, um, is very, um, well documented. And, um, we provide case management, housing navigation services, which, um, aim to provide um, safe exits into permanent housing. And not only that, but we also, um, educate our clients on their rights and as tenants and also help them navigate the complexities of the barriers that they face when they access, um, um, in, in their quest for permanent housing. We really hope that we, you consider, um, funding, um, funding us this time and we thank you again for your, um, support. Have a good evening.
Community Partnership for Youth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Ray Adams. I'm the lead mentor, uh, for Community Partnership for Youth. Uh, just real quick, uh, you do have our packet, so I won't go over all that information, but this money would be used for our high school leadership, life skills and job preparation program. Uh, currently we have 15, excuse me, 14 staff members that are in high school that are earning a paycheck. We have another 15 that are currently getting their volunteer hours done. Um, and we just interviewed and hired another three this week. Um, enough about that. I would like to speak a little bit about myself in that last minute, 30 seconds. So I started with CPY when I was in high school, so this money directly impacts what helped me stay in the program. Um, and will help impact a lot of other students stay in our program and of course earn money as they're going through high school education, but then that transition from high school into college like myself. Um, you've heard from a lot of our staff members in the past, uh, and this is like a huge impact, a huge benefit for their, for their ability to survive in this community that is extremely expensive to live in. Um, again, I've been with CPY for 15, going on 16 years now. And the only way that we are able to make an impact like we do is by our partners, is by the donations that we receive from the community, but then of course from the city council. So of course, um, I thank you for all the work that you guys do. Uh, thank you for all the agencies and all the work that they all do, because all of us, I think, do very important work. Um, and so I thank you all for your time and consideration.
Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Emmanuel Church. You now have the floor to speak. Rosalyn Green, you now have the floor to make your comment.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of Emmanuel Church of God in Christ. Um, in regards to our request, we're seeking to, um, get funding to support our, um, food pantry that we have. It's a, uh, expansion project that we've been doing for, um, quite some time. Many seaside families continue to struggle with food insecurity, particularly access to fresh, healthy and affordable options. And so currently, uh, we have pantry limitations um, and restrictions because we need to enhance our, um, equipment and ability to serve, um, our community. I can't see the timer, so I don't know if I have more time to talk.
Thank you. Everyone's Harvest.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, my name is Hester Parker and I'm the executive director of Everyone's Harvest and we run the seaside farmer's market and we are seeking, uh, funds to increase our program, our community food, food program called Market Match, which is where we, um, provide matching funds for anyone who has CalFresh or EBT or you might know them as food stamps, uh, benefits. Uh, people come to the market and they can get double the amount of, um, what's on their card to buy fruits and vegetables at the market. And so we've been very successful in, we currently have a, a minimum of $15 a match per day. So the, if they spend $15 on their card, they get $15 extra. Um, we would like to, we, we seek funding to increase that because we found that when we increased it to 30, $30 match, we were able to get a 36% increase in, in people's, um, buying. And that means that in between the months of January and August last year of this year, that, that put $25,000 back into the local economy from, from these programs. So that's our main, uh, request. And then also we want to provide the, uh, use the funds for increasing the, our cooking demonstrations that we do at the markets to help people learn about ways to cook, um, with fresh produce, uh, that's available seasonally and at this local market. And I really appreciate all of the support the city of Seaside gives to us to, uh, run this market. And I hope you get over there. There's live music today. Thank you.
Friends of Seaside Park Association.
Hi, my name is Donna Penwell and I'm a member of the Friends of Seaside Park Association. And, um, first I want to thank the council for their support of our association, uh, for the past few years. And, um, just let you know that we're here requesting funds so we can let even more people know about what's happening in the nine parks, city parks that the, um, the Friends of Seaside Parks oversees right now in that we go every Saturday from 10 to 12, um, working on the pollinator gardens and the food gardens that we have in, um, those nine parks. Um, we want to build an awareness campaign because we realize that we have gotten to a point in our development where we have a core, a really good core group of about 50 to 60 people that come every Saturday, um, uh, from 10 to 12, as I said. But we're still missing a large portion of our community. We know, of course, we all know that our parks, um, serve as an accessible gathering space for our very diverse population here in Seaside. Um, we promote childhood development through our playgrounds that are in our parks. We, uh, improve a, a general overall quality of life for our community. We just need to let more people know that that's what we're doing so that we can, um, join together and make our group even more of a presence. Um, Jeanie's going to talk some, about some more details about our request today.
I just wanted to add that, um, we're, we're, um, addressing wellbeing from a different perspective. The perspective of community coming together to be outside together, to help restore our parks together and to make our, our, um, city a better place. And it's kind of an empowering thing to be able to do that as citizens of Seaside. Thank you.
Jean Holloway Consulting.
I have a knee injury, so I had to take that gingerly. I'm Jacqueline Simon. Uh, the program that Jean, Dr. Jean Holloway and I have, uh, created was the day that, um, probably many of you would never be able to unsee. That was the day that George Floyd was murdered. It was May 25th, 2020. As an educator, as a former person working in law enforcement and community corrections, I decided to develop a program so that we could better help to humanize youth with police officers and police with youth. I start each segment of our activities off with, I want you all to get home tonight to your families. Because it is that simple is to have people learn more about each other. I did that in the effort that you share what was needed after that day, which was youth activities programs with police officers. We would bond them, we would partner them to be in activities against each other. So they form bonds there. It's been going on for four years. I primarily have been funding it myself and a little bit from others. Can't continue to do it at that level because now we have over 30 youth of promise and public safety officers in seaside California, as well as in Monterey and other city, uh, police systems. What's important about it is it's also academic. So I'm an academician and I believe it's important to educate people. If you don't know something, it's best to try to help do that. Another thing that we did is to try to work on the level of learning, teaching and healing, because that's what we need to do. There's a lot of more information in my packet, but I would like to say black and brown children have a problem and issue. This program has proven that not, uh, to continue to happen in that manner. Youth work together with us in those efforts with all students, all children, all parents. So two minutes is not a lot of time, but I'm hoping that I know all of you have been to our events and, um, so hopefully you'll remember some of that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Greater Victory Temple Church.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, my name is Dexter Kennedy and I am the husband of the director for the Greater Victory Temple, uh, afternoon community program, um, Ms. Amanda Kennedy. She really wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately she was traveling for work. And if I was in your shoes, I would want to see her beautiful face as opposed to mine, but I'm what you have tonight. So the Greater Victory Temple Afternoon Community Support Program is a free, safe and structured after school initiative that provides both supervision and high quality educational enrichment for students attending Martin Luther King School of the Arts in Seaside, California. The program addresses a critical community need by ensuring that students, the majority of which come from historically underserved backgrounds have access to a supportive environment during after school hours, reducing risks associated with unsupervised time while also supporting academic growth and personal development. We are seeking these city funds to expand our specialized tutoring services with a particular focus on reading and literacy proficiency. Strengthening literacy skills at an early age is vital for long-term academic success. And the requested funds will allow us to provide targeted, small group and one-on-one instructions aligned to research-based practices. With this expansion, students struggling in foundational reading will receive individualized support designed to boost confidence, close skill gaps and improve overall school performance. So, thank you. She prepared me.
Jocana.
Good evening, council members and community members present. My name is Ben Nurse, the executive director of Jocana Affordable Housing Nonprofit here in Monterey County. Um, the, our application is, is looking for support from the council to support an education program for cooperative housing in the city of Seaside. What that means is training current tenants in the creation, stewardship and governance of cooperative housing. So I'll talk about the why. That's a little different from what's in the application. Why, uh, cooperative over any of the other types of housing? I had the privilege during 2020, the period that we're talking about, to manage the, the rental assistance program in the city of Seaside and we saw that many of our, the residents here are paying 50, 60 and over 75% of their, their income towards rent. We understand that, that, um, housing is a definite, uh, major need in Seaside and, and what corporatives do is that we prepare the, the existing tenants to take over the governance of, of their property. Um, so our program is looking to, to train those tenants with the skills to, to be aboard, to manage, um, and, and govern their, their properties with the overall, uh, eventual goal of, uh, acquiring those, those buildings, mostly multifamily buildings and then the tenants managing it without that. and then the tenants managing it without that profit motive. So we already have some advocates from rental advocates from Seaside already beginning that process. So we want to continue that and expand it to a larger tenant pool. We're looking at about 100 tenants over the next year to train them in the creation and steward of cooperative housing. And those tenants, on average, and our residents in corporatives tend to pay 23 to 30% of the income versus the 75%, as I mentioned. So I appreciate your review and thank you for your time.
Jerry's Place? Meals on Wheels?
Good evening. My name is Esther Hobbs. I'm the Development Director at Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula. It's my pleasure to be here tonight and I must want to thank you all for this really difficult conversation that you're having because there are so many worthy applicants in this room. And I'm walking around just looking at everyone saying, "How can you choose?" But I just want to say this. Everyone knows basically what Meals on Wheels does. We deliver meals to people who are homebound. We also with this grant are trying to really increase the Old Meyer Senior Lunch Program that we also provide the food for because we believe that that's a real area for Seaside to grow. Our meals cost approximately $5 per meal. And I just want to let you share with one, you want one story that I heard yesterday, which I think is Wednesday, which was a person who was here in Seaside. She's in her early 80s and her partner passed away a few years ago. She sent us a letter that just said, basically, "The food has been very good for sustenance, but it's really the contact with other humans that has kept me alive." And that's one piece of what we do that's often overlooked. And I just want to say that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Monterey Peninsula College? Palenque Arts?
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, City Attorney, Mr. Manager, City Manager. My name is Juan and I'm the Executive Director. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to address you. I come with a little bit of a heavy heart because one of our former board members, Carmen Mexicano, just passed away. We laid her to rest. I, the first thing I want to say is, thank you for including her in your, in the closing today. She, she was from Oaxaca, from Oaxaca de Juárez, and which is our sister city. And for me, she represented everything that is good about what we do, which is stand up for those who society would not really give the same place as, as others. We live in dangerous times. I have eight-year-olds telling me that they know their rights, that they will not be talking to a police officer, that they will be, they're getting ready with their red cards just in case somebody, somebody takes their parents. I, I listen to them and my heart breaks. Yes, we are doing art and we're doing community events. We have 26 weekly classes. Next week, we'll start all our music classes. We're going to start music classes at Seiza High School. We're pitching in, helping out in both concert strings. And also we're going to go into Central Coast High School. So we will have as of next week, four different sites. I want to thank you for standing for the youth in our communities in Seaside and for the work of Palenque. Thank you.
Refresh Start? Salvation Army?
Hello, my name is Yessenia Lopez Rubio and I am the Housing Program Manager for our housing programs here in Seaside. We do have two programs within our department, our emergency shelter and our transitional housing. So both are for families. The grant that we're asking for is more towards our transitional housing. And so that is for 14 families. Families come in all shapes and sizes. So as long as families are homeless, they would be eligible for our program. Within our program, we offer case management to families and that is individual eyes to each family. So that is kind of part of our ask where we work with the family on an individual basis. We provide them with workshops. So we are connected to actually a lot of the agencies in Seaside. So that way families are familiar with the resources that are in this area. We also offer for our housing program a very small fee. And so families only have to worry about that just occupancy fee and then we cover the rest. Salvation Army covers all utilities and everything for the families. This program helps families stay safe and also offers them the opportunity to really be able to get back on their feet, be able to create a tenant, tenant education. And that way they can be better neighbors. They can really be a role model within the community and also for their children. This program also offers children a safe space because they know where they're going, they know where they're going to sleep, they know that they have support with Salvation Army.
Stepping Stone Outreach?
John Holt, Stepping Stone Outreach. Good evening. Stepping Stone is a food pantry here in Seaside. We operate seven days a week. We are open to the public five days a week. Effectively what we do is we pick up food from retail supermarkets that is edible, reusable and distributed to the community. Monday, we had 75 people show up to collect food. 53% of our clients are senior citizens. 15% are homeless. And they come every day, every week. I know that you're going to have a real hard time making decisions tonight as to what to do with the limited amount of money that you have allocated. But I'd remind you that these are perilous times. Things are difficult throughout the entire country, not just here. And in perilous times, you have to think first to your basics, food and shelter. And I appreciate all the good work that everyone's doing that's been up here presenting tonight. I admire the people that are doing those kinds of things. But I would remind you that if you don't get the basics right, all the rest of this stuff is going to be a lot more difficult. Additionally, Stepping Stone is 100% volunteer organization. We don't take salaries for anybody. Thank you.
Sun Street Centers? Followed by the Village Project after Sun Street?
Good evening, council members. My name is Lynn McCreeter. I'm Community Development Manager for Sun Street Centers. We're seeking funding for our Safe Teens Empowerment Project and our Road to Success Project, which will serve about 3,000 Seaside residents, mainly youth. Katya is the Program Manager. I'll let her describe the program.
Hi, everyone. Our STEPS program is a youth-led program that we have here in Seaside. And every year we have monthly goals that we have the students work on and take lead on projects. It's a great program. It allows for life skills development and it allows for, you know, job skills. And really, somebody here talked about being an outcome of a program and that's me. You know, STEPS allowed me to be up here many, many years ago and gave me the skills I needed to build a career, which I'm very grateful for. And I would just like the same opportunities for the Seaside youth. I would like to see them up here in a couple of years and advocate. And so just some of the things that we work on. We work on bullying campaigns. We work on overdose awareness campaigns, substance abuse awareness campaigns. And as far as for our Road to Success program, that's more of an intervention program for youth who may get in trouble in school or may get their first ticket of misdemeanor within the court system. They come and they work with us, they work with the case manager. They work on skills on how to, you know, work with whatever the reason was that they got referred for, whether it was substance use or behavioral issues. And we provide them with the skills necessary to be as successful as possible. And I would really hope that you guys take this into account and thank you very much for your time.
I just want to close by saying that it goes back to the foundational principles of your grants program. I think that our law enforcement people will tell you there's a close relationship between misuse of drugs and alcohol and violence.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mel Mason. I'm co-founder of the Village Project. And for 17 and a half years now, we've been involved in youth intervention work. We were involved in youth intervention work before there was a program called such. We've also received a grant all throughout the years that this program has been in existence as well in recognition of the work that we have done that's been so successful. I know here we have Mr. Ron Menhoris, who is our Program Manager, Elijah Vilinga, who is our Program Assistant. We also have here three young men who are members of our program and great examples of our program. We have what we call community-defined evidence practices. They, they work for the folks that we work with. Some of our programs and services involve groups and that's groups for, for young people, groups for parents. We work very closely with parents. We also work in collaboration with other organizations, see people I being one. And also our churches, other community-based organizations and law enforcement as well. We know that there needs to be a well-rounded approach to dealing with this in our community. And so we have all those community resources to work with as well. We have, as I mentioned, groups for our parents. And one group in particular that we're really proud of is a group called One Circle. And there had been mentioned earlier of the black and brown conflicts. This group serves to mitigate that and to bring people together as one family. And so we still have that group going. Our, our young people will be involved in that group. And we also have similar groups for our parents as well. Mental health services, the Village Project is a community-based mental health organization. So we have mental health services that are also available for parents and, and young people. And they've all taken advantage of those in the past. And so our success rate has been very high and, and we just feel like that that's going to continue if we get this grant as well. And if we don't get the grant, we're going to continue to do the work anyway. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the list. There were six agencies that did not respond. Should I call them?
Yeah, give them a, give them a call. They may have came into the room or online.
Applicants that are online, please ensure that you use the raise your hand feature. All In Monterey County? Arts Council? Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated? Jerry's Place? Monterey Peninsula College? Refresh Start? Mayor, there are no responses from those agencies.
Thank you so much. We'll close up. That portion, then we'll open up a public comment. We'll do a one-minute public comments, public comment on this issue.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you're calling from a phone.
Good evening. I'm Michael Enriquez. I've been helped by six of the organizations that have applied. I've been in the safe parking program at the Baptist Church, Battle Missionary Baptist Church since early May. I don't know what my life would be like if I wasn't able to park there, especially after you reduce the hours for legal parking on public property. I've also been helped by Meals on Wheels, getting nourishment there. Monterey Peninsula College, since I've enrolled this semester, being able to hang out there, get electricity. Friends of Seaside Parks let me plant back when my life was more stable and I grew kale and watered and created a friendship with Jeanne. I've received food from Stepping Stone. Although our interactions haven't been great, hopefully they'll improve after tonight. And let me see what other organizations. Salvation Army has helped me with gas vouchers, mail receipt, showers, laundry and a place to be to meet some other homeless people in the community. So thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Michelle Overmeyer. I'm a resident of Seaside. It really warms my heart to see all of the amazing community leaders we have here in this room, supporting such wonderful efforts. I am a board member for Palenque Arts and I'm here to encourage you to provide funding to Palenque Arts. The free or low-cost multicultural arts programs offered by Palenque Arts are unmatched in regularly drawing people from other parts of the region to come here to Seaside. Palenque Arts supports community building and it creates a safe place for youth to gather and has positive benefits for mental health. I wish you luck with your deliberations. I'm going home to have dinner with my family. So good luck. Thank you.
Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, City Council, as you try to figure out which groups to support, please consider the long-term necessity that these people develop spiritually as well as other ways that they develop solid biblical character and virtue and self-reliance so that they don't just get the next meal. In other words, you don't just give someone a fish. You teach them how to become fishers of men so that they will spiritually and emotionally mature. They will be able to grow and become, pay their own bills and actually save money and help others and love their neighbors. And these, pick those programs that are able to do this. It's almost like in the jails. It's prison fellowship has a 9% return rate versus 75. So please pick the high-quality Christian character programs. Thank you.
Can I go again?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna go off script. Honey, if you're watching, the spirit just hit me. So I heard the Stepping Stone gentleman kind of plugged, you know, the food bank. So I just want to plug the, the after-school community program that we run, especially as it ties to the literacy that we're trying to increase. So there's research out there that says that by the third grade, if they're not reading proficiently, their four-time, students are four times more likely to drop out of high school. And those that drop out of, and students who drop out of high school are more likely to be incarcerated. So in helping the students gain better literacy and reading skills, we're also helping them in life down the line. So I just wanted to say that. And one other point, so I did some quick math. If you take 420,000, you divide it by a million, that's about 42%. So if you could give everybody 40% of what they asked for, we'd all be good. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial *9 if you're calling from a phone.
Good evening, Diane Nielsen. Good evening, City Council. I am in awe of FASPA and the volunteers that the week, do things that are over and above what a, a, a normal person does in a community generally. I know these people here do more than the average person, too. Um, a lot of us are getting older, and we are really excited to try to create more, even more community and maybe some of the younger, um, members of our community, like working with, um, I haven't mentioned this to my board, but working with, uh, Seaside High School, how the, um, principal there said his students were able to help out with things. So, expanding this community of volunteers in FOSPA would do a, um, a great deal for our community. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name's Ron Menhoris. I'm a youth violence intervention, um, program manager. Um, there's a lot of things that, um, Mel didn't get time to say, but, uh, we do a lot of court support. We're, uh, doing tattoo removal for, uh, these young, uh, people who've been affected by gangs. Um, we're also, uh, doing, uh, um, the, uh, for, uh, community service hours at, uh, Seaside High School, giving out food to the community with these youngsters. Uh, we're also doing, um, uh, drug testing, uh, we're, uh, speaking at, uh, the youth, um, juvenile courts, um, court support. Um, there's so many, there's so many, um, services that we're providing at this time, but thank you for your time.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Um, yeah, you do have a tough decision to make tonight. Um, I do want to put a plug in. I'm Regina Mason, I'm the co-founder of The Village Project, and I have to say that nonprofits help create barriers to, uh, adversity in the lives of our residents and people that live in our communities. And I think mental health is really critical, especially right now, but I just want to uplift one thing, and that is, our, our agency is a community-defined evidence-based practice program, and it's at the state level, and if you go on the California Department of Public Health under health, culture is health, you'll see the research that was done, and for every one dollar you spend on agencies that are community-defined and researched, you'll find that you save five dollars. And so I do want you to really look at the data on, you know, all the information that you're getting from all these great organizations, and so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Rosalynn Green, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you, I thought I'd get there in time. Sorry, Seaside Raiders Practice just got out. I just want to, um, want to say good work to all of the applicants, um, and I do want to also speak to, um, what was said about the way that this, um, grant came into existence with the youth that we have been working with, um, for many years, really, um, asking the city to, to invest in the work that's done. And I do want to, um, give a big, uh, shout-out to Seaside Rising for doing work, um, that is going to be cultivating leaders, um, to work in our communities, to be able to, the students to be able to go to school and come back home and live and thrive in our communities. So I do want to, um, again, say good job to everyone, and also, um, put a shout-out for Seaside Rising. Um, also Emmanuel Bethel and Jakana, good work, um, in feeding and housing.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is called bringing it back, bringing it back to the dais. Uh, is there any comments someone wants to make or take a stab at moving forward?
Yeah, I could, I can make a stab moving forward with, with some recommendations that I have, if that's acceptable. Um, when I, I base my decision or recommendations based on the George Floyd area, era, as well as the, um, defunding police, uh, concept as far as more services, not less police, but better use of police time. And so, and, and also I based it on, uh, uplifting youth, mentoring youth, that's where, and potential areas where youth can be involved in a lower-level project and move up and learn and, and participate. That was the area that I'm going to be recommending. Uh, all the groups are great, but I have, I, when I read this very thick binder, very well-done by staff, um, I focused on the areas what I thought defined what I believe is the mission. So this is it, and we're going to take, anyway. The Youth Leadership, eighty-two thousand. Leadership through mentoring, CPY, thirty-two thousand. Youth Intervention Project, Village Project, eighty-two thousand. Palenque Arts, eighty-two thousand. Community Arts Council, thirty-three thousand. Jabberwalk, five thousands. Friends of Seaside Parks, fourteen thousand. Afternoon Community Support, Greater Victory, fifteen thousand. Um, and Sun Street Center, uh, twenty-five thousand. I'm just going to say, and I'm not as kind as the mayor or, or as, uh, friendly, just for me personally, in the future, and just for me, if I'm going to, if the council, if I'm going to recommend a group for, and I did not do it on this first go-around, a fifteen to a hundred thousand dollars, I think that's very a lot, I would appreciate it on a personal level for that group to be here. And that's because the mayor is correct in his, what he's saying, but for me, I like to see the energy with representation, but that's just my, and I just had to say that for my mental health. Thank you.
Yeah, we want your mental health to stay healthy. So we were supposed to have, uh, a mechanism, some type of spreadsheet to keep track of that. You have that? Did you capture all what, uh, could you?
Okay. Okay. Seaside Youth Leadership Act.
Hold on, are you ready? So, okay.
Action Council, Monterey County, eighty-two thousand. Leadership through mentoring, um, CPY. Youth Intervention Village Project, um, eighty-two. Palenque Arts, eighty-two. Are you okay so far? Eighty-two. So, the first four are eighty-two thousand. Community Arts, um, Art Council for Monterey Council, thirty-three. Jabberwalk, twenty-twenty-six, that's the Delta Theta Sorority, but that's the Jabberwalk because they submitted two. Friends of, um, Seaside Parks, fourteen thou. Afternoon Community Support, Greater Victory, fifteen center, fifteen thousand. Uh, and Seaside Youth Substance Prevention Program, Sun Street Center, twenty-five thousand. I checked my math twice, it should be right. The five, that's the, but it's to the Jabberwalk because they submitted two, five thousand. Perfect, thank you so much. Uh, anyone else?
Uh, council member Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to confirm with the city clerk if those numbers truly did, were the forty, four-hundred-and-twenty thousand?
Yes. I checked my math twice.
No. I just want to check it a third time. Of course. And, and Mr. Pacheco, um, you, you came to this because you believe that this is the, the foundation of the program and, and, and the intent, if I understood you correctly?
The answer to that is, I, I, I was on the council at that time, and, and I remember it was a time of disruption in the community, and, and it tied into George Floyd, and it tied into, uh, seriously, defund, at that time, defunding cops was a definite movement, and it was a way to balance services and, and provide more service. That's what I remember, as well as, uh, Councilman Campbell at that time.
And there's one on there, the Gene Holloway Consulting, that one I believe is directly related to the youth and, and, and what you just described, but you didn't seem to include them, but was, was there a reason for that, or?
Um, I think we-
Hold on, let me just jump in.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I don't know where, where we can get right now by asking why we didn't include one and why we include the other. I, I think we're going to get to a point where, um, you know, everybody's numbers don't add up, and so we, somebody may be above, well, I don't know how you get above four-twenty, but, uh, it's possible somebody may be less than four-twenty, but however the case may be, at the end of the day, uh, three or more is going to have to agree. And so that's where the conversation is really going to, uh, uh, what is it, be based on. And so, uh, I don't know where we get if we ask each other why you didn't do that one, but you did this one. Uh, everybody has to make their own independent decision, and then if, again, three people had to agree on a level, so these numbers are going to change. And that's where we're going to have to talk about, not necessarily asking why someone didn't get something, because at a certain point, uh, no matter what, it is a possibility. I, I think I did hear somebody say, just give everybody forty percent what they asked for, but, you know, uh, that would be the only way that, that every group got more than zero. So it's always a question about why someone didn't get something, so I don't think that's-
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate that answer, and I certainly respect that, so thank you for clarifying that for me. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. I'm all done.
You don't have any? Okay.
I'm all except for now.
No, I got you, I got you. Uh, anyone else wants to go? Or, you know, you don't have to look at his list, that's the whole point, you may have your own list, so, um, you don't have to look at his and try to adjust his.
My-
No, 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 I'm just, no, I'm just, we, you know, I don't want people to say, well, he, he get that number, I, I had a different number, um, because again, it's going to take three people, so. Are you, did you want to go, uh, council member, Garcia Zoll?
Thank you. If you can go back to the spreadsheet, please, for, under Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, are both of the requests included in, no, the one, the Pacheco one, the Pacheco list? Just one?
Just one.
Which one?
The Jabberwalk.
If I'm not mistaken, that just says that they're going to use the funding for screen and multipurpose room. Wouldn't that just be, couldn't they just apply for a fee where, for that? And the expenditure that they said, we'll use the funds for screen and multipurpose room.
Hey, I think at the end of the day, um, some of these requests could be, uh, fulfilled by other means. And so I think where we at is just what level you want to give them, if you don't want to give them nothing, you don't need no rationale.
Yeah. I just wanted an explanation as to why he, well, not why he put that, but also wanted to confirm what they were going to use the funding for. If, if we can offset that another way, then there's no way that-
We, but we can't guarantee the other way now, that's what I'm saying.
We, we can't, but-
Well, but that's, that's the hard part about just saying, either you want to give them, for example, this one, either you want to give them the full ten, or you want to give them something less than that. Uh, saying how, the other ways, their possibilities is prejudging, and we shouldn't get in ahead of ourselves.
Okay.
It's, that's why they talked about this was the difficult part. So, uh, did you, uh-
Let me think about this for a bit.
Anybody else want to, we get close to our break anyway, so, did you want to go?
No.
And maybe, uh, city clerk, is that, then maybe each council member is a different, uh, uh, column? Mayor Protem is B, and then the next person, whoever it is, is C, right? Okay. That way we don't lose track of what the original was, because the thing is, he may not be willing to adjust his original, that he said. Okay, all right, let's go.
I'm so similar to, uh, Mayor Protem, thinking about the George Floyd situation and us having to, um, provide opportunities for our youth and our young adults. Um, I think my perception or my, my idea was more of spreading the wealth a little bit more, but I don't, I didn't go all the way to the four-twenty, so I definitely have room for, um, flexibility. So what I have is Action Council, full at a hundred thousand, CPY at fifty. Okay.
Isn't Action Council on the other side? They should all be, okay, I see what you're doing, because it may be different. Okay, I was just trying, trying to help you, but you don't need my help, so.
I had CPY, Palenque, and Village Project at fifty thousand. Uh, Delta Sigma, the full ten thousand for both of their projects. Gene Holloway at twenty-one. Greater Victory at fifteen thousand. Emmanuel Church at ten. All In Monterey at twenty. Everyone's Harvest at twenty-three, seven, fifty-nine, which is, I think they were, that was the exact amount they asked for. And then Sunset Street Centers and MPC at fifteen thousand. And if I'm correct, that's only three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven, fifty-nine. So, definitely flexibility to increase for any of them. Fifteen.
Yeah, I'm ready to go, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm at the, um, Action Council, seventy-five thousand, CPY, uh, thirty thousand, Greater Vic-
Yeah. Fourth time.
Yes, sir. Victory Temple, seventy-five thousand, you got that? Uh, Youth Leadership Action Council at seventy-five thousand, CPY at thirty thousand. No, I'm sorry, excuse me. Palenque, seventy-five thousand. Arts Council, thirty thousand. FOSPA, fourteen thousand. Greater Victory, fifteen thousand. Sun Street Centers, twenty thousand. Gee, twenty? Gene Holloway, twenty-five thousand. Everyone's Harvest, ten thousand. Stepping Stone, fifteen thousand. Ten thousand. Stepping Stone at fifteen thousand. And Meals on Wheels at sixteen thousand. And Meals on Wheels at sixteen thousand. And then Greater Victory. Was there an amount that they requested?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Do you have them on the list? So they're, they're asked. That's, I believe, around four hundred thousand. That's my, that's my preference. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? What? Okay. Now he wants to wait till we come, that's, so let's go, uh, we need to give staff the break before we get into it, so, uh, we will go into a, a recess. A ten-minute, twelve-minute recess.
Time back from recess. Anyone else? Who wants to go next? Yes, council member Garcia is on.
Awesome. So I finally had time to double, triple check my numbers. I will start with the action board at eighty, Action Council, there we go, eighty thousand dollars. I will do the Arts Council at twenty thousand. CPY at eighty thousand. Everyone's Harvest at twenty three thousand. CPY eighty thousand. Everyone's Harvest twenty three thousand. FOSPA at fifteen thousand. Meals on Wheels at ten thousand. Palenque at eighty thousand. Sun Street Center at eighteen thousand. Village Project at eighty thousand. And MPC at fourteen thousand. MPC fourteen. It was twenty three.
I need to learn that little skill right there. I was about to say, I need, I thought that was me for a second. That last eighty thousand. Sun Street is not eighty thousand.
Yeah, Sun Street was at eighteen.
Yeah, see what happens now.
There you go.
Okay. I, I think, like what's, are you done? I think like what said was earlier is some of, some of these, well, everybody that applied, we appreciate, I appreciate everybody that applied, but of course, it's not enough money to go around to every agency. So those that did not receive any so-called recommendations from me does not mean I don't value those nonprofits in our community. And I, I I do want to say this before I, I forget. I don't forget if I, because, because I wrote it down. And I think Mrs. Mason said it about these, the nonprofits, you know, are a barrier to the consequences of the negative environment that we in. I thought that was so beautifully put. I'm gonna, I'm gonna remember that and use that very often because I, I never heard it put like that. But that's exactly what all these nonprofits do. And so we can only afford the ones that we can resource at this time. And there's other avenues for other groups. I got the Action Council for ninety thousand. All in for twenty five. You got something to look. Then CPY for sixty. Deltas for ten. Emmanuel for ten. Everyone's Harvest for twenty four. FOSPA for fifteen. Galloway for twenty one. Yeah, Holloway, yeah, Jean Holloway, I don't know why I said Holloway. Twenty one. Greater Victory. Fifteen. MPC for fifteen. Palanque is for sixty. Sixty. Sun Street is for fifteen. The Village Project for sixty. I'm not sure what that adds up to. Oh, okay. And then for, for the council, I, I do. You know, I'm not, I'm not stuck on a fifteen for MPC, but I, I do think this city should look at ways to get our oral history. You know, people are just passing away, so we have to figure out some way and, and, and they have a program that they say they want to do it and they could do it at any, the initial cost, they didn't say, well, it'd be the minimum. So I'm open to, to, to not doing that. I, I guess that's really me saying, hopefully the council can figure out a way to figure out how we can get our oral history done. So I'm not tied to necessarily MPC. But I, so, so that's what's up there now. And then I'm open for whatever we can agree to. So you don't need to, yeah, just the asterisk would be just fine for me. That's really a place, a reminder for me. So thank you. Okay. All right. So is there any ones that, that already have three supports at the same level?
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah.
Dominique, my numbers are a little bit off from what I had put here. Can I go over mine again, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
Thank you. So the first number is correct. The second number is correct. Palenque, Arts Council. Is thirty. FOSPA fourteen. Greater Victory. Fifteen. I believe the Jean Holloway. Twenty five, Everyone's Harvest. Ten, Stepping Stone. Should be fifteen. And I believe the biggest mistake is the Village Project. That is not included on there. I indicated seventy five thousand. And that should be a total of four hundred and thirty. So I'd like to amend. I'd like to amend to, to make it four hundred and twenty. So I'd like to amend the Jean Holloway from twenty five thousand to twenty thousand. And I would like to amend the Stepping Stone from fifteen thousand to ten thousand. And that's four hundred and twenty. And that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, so it's hard to see because they're so, they're so big right now, but is there any ones that we agreed to? That's at the same level?
FOSPA is really close within the thousand.
Well, no, let's, let's, let's get the ones we agreed to first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. FOSPA is like four of them.
Ah, it's.
I think.
I, I don't know. That's actually, someone said Greater Victory, is that?
Greater Victory too.
Okay, see, there you go. I knew it was one. So yeah, I don't know how you want to pull that out or put that somewhere on a different list.
That's the real list, Greater Victory. Well, they moved up, they moved to the positive.
Okay, so now we can start at the top, I guess. Action Council, how many, how many adds at a hundred? Yeah. So you got ninety, you got eighty, and then let me see the other one, seventy five. So eighty, ninety, and two hundred, so one hundred.
And eighty two, I have eighty two.
Oh, you have eighty two. Does anybody want to move to get two on the same line? Then there's three on the same line? Or do you guys want, or do you guys want to do an average of the five? Or you want somebody to move towards you? Or are you willing to move towards someone else?
I'm leaning towards an average.
I'm playing with an average.
Oh, okay. Okay, so what, yeah, we'll let her do the average and then we'll.
Good way to do it.
Yeah, that's a good way. For some.
Yeah, for some, right.
You know. Is it, yeah, we got city manager, city attorney got calculators on their phone, so we could help, they can help with the averages too. Well, no, they got it, they got it right here, so.
Which group are they talking to?
Yeah, five, yeah, five. Yeah, but I'm just saying. Yeah, no, no, I just. No, it's not the problem of math. It's, it's manipulating that kind of spreadsheet. And I don't think anybody that been here knows how to manipulate that spreadsheet better than the city clerk. So, but it would be helpful if the people that have calculators, when we average, we can average, but she's manipulating the spreadsheet and I don't think, I'm not going to complain about that. Because I can't, right?
It's cool. It's great.
And there you go, there you go. Let her, well, okay, so but definitely the city manager and city attorney can check the averages and we'll let her concentrate on moving around the sheet numbers. Okay, let's, let's keep rolling. Did you come? We'll let him. You got it right, and we'll confirm with the city manager and then, then we'll go to the next one. What did, what did you have?
Eighty five thousand four hundred is the average.
Is that the city manager? Could you speak into the mic?
Yes.
Okay, all right, eighty. Yeah. So, okay, so then the next one is top of the list again. CPY? The what? Ours, ours council already has three? The same?
No, but if you are doing.
No, no, no. If you don't have three.
He does have three.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Okay, what is the three?
It's twenty thousand from Garcia.
Uh huh.
Thirty thousand from Miller and thirty three thousand from Pacheco.
Okay. And you guys are good? Okay, all right.
Is that a?
So you want to see what it averages?
Unless you guys want to change.
No, that's not, there are three different numbers there though.
No, the three you guys already agree. Do you want to go up? Or does somebody want to go up? Or you want to stay the same? That's the question. But if there, you already agree on your number, it's not for me to tell you to go less or to go higher.
I'm okay with the average of the three numbers.
Sorry. You know what that averages out to, right? Thirty?
Nope.
The same number?
It does not.
What does it have?
It averages out to twenty seven thousand six hundred sixty seven.
No.
It does.
No, where the three agree.
They have three different numbers. They agree, but, but the, the average of all three of those numbers is twenty seven thousand.
Hold on, I thought someone told me we had three people that agreed on the same number.
No.
I that's not what I asked? And someone said it was. Okay, let's, let's, let's just focus. My point is, the first thing is three people agree, then that's the majority of the council. If one of them changes, what did it changes? And that's what I asked them. Okay, so do we have three people that agree? And it's no. All right, so do anybody want to move? Or do we want to go to average? Do you want to go to average?
Can you? I would like to go to average if it's okay.
Okay.
Mike, can you read off the three monies? So just like, because I'm probably willing to go down.
Okay. And as for which one?
I think you were talking about the Arts, Arts Council. So what, what did the others two have? And I could maybe make it easier.
Arts Council is, let's go to Arts Council.
Is that the one you were talking about?
It's, no, we're gonna go back to that. Let's go to Arts Council. So.
It's twenty, thirty, and thirty three.
Oh, twenty four.
Yeah, can we just shrink those? It should be able to. Okay, well, yeah, make it a little, yeah. Not too small, but that's, yeah, that's better. So go through the Arts Council. I, I'd rather just go down your list of the first person. Let's go all the way to the left. Mr. Pacheco. All right, someone said Arts Council, so do we? Is that, that's let's, let's, let's do CPY. Go at, now do anybody want to move? You got eighty two, you got fifty, you got sixty. And Garcia and me, Garcia is all in me. You got another eighty. Twenty and a sixty.
Can I amend my?
Yes, of course you can.
So, because I think I didn't disperse about forty thousand, so I think that would be about thirteen thousand for CPY. Palenque and Village Project, so instead of fifty would be sixty three thousand for each one of those. Yeah, and Palenque.
All getting sixty three? Okay. Now we'll see if that adds up to the twenty.
CPY, Palenque, and Village.
Where's Palenque?
Right, right below, yeah. And we all agree to, and we all want funding to go to them, so if the council's open to averaging out. Like we did for Action Council. For those three, I would.
Well, I think, yeah, I think I did all sixty for them, so I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So go up to sixty three?
Well.
No, I'm just what a
You're trying to average it out.
Yeah.
Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, or, or, or go up to sixty three. I can't really see the rest of it, so.
Mine's eighty, mine's eighty two, and I think someone else is eighty.
Well, if she's going to go up, I'm not a person, now do you want, well, she's not going to go up to eighty.
Yeah, I'm just saying mine's eighty two, and I think Councilman Arizona is eighty, that's what.
So average.
That would change the average beyond sixty three, that's all I'm saying.
So can someone calculate the average?
So the average is sixty nine thousand dollars.
Okay, for each one of those. Okay.
That's just for CPY. Just CPY.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. No, thank you. Okay. Okay. But I think the Village and Palenque is the same kind of issue at that high, high level. Okay, let's do the Village then. Eighty two. Sixty three, eighty two, sixty three, I might as well start doing myself. Seventy five. Eighty. And I think I did sixty. That seems to be seventy two thousand. Anybody okay with that average? Anybody okay with that average? Is, is that what we're gonna try to do on a couple more, average, okay? All right, so then, um, who is that, Palenque? Palenque? That's, we did.
That was Village.
Hold on, hold, you.
Sorry.
Yes. Boys, okay. Uh, that's, yeah, that's where I was, uh. That's where my concerns lay, lay, yeah, okay, so Plankies. Is. Eighty-two. Sixty-three. Seventy-five. I don't see them underneath. Oh, I'm sorry, eighty. And then I know mine's a sixty. Seventy-two again. Seventy-two. Okay. Um. Who? You ready? Yeah, that's not, well. So. It's community arts, anybody else have community arts?
Arts council.
As the arts council.
What are the numbers for the art council? Yeah, I know. I can't see it. Thirty.
Um, what was it again?
Thirty. It's twenty. Three.
Thirty-three, twenty-two.
Six-six.
Just, is that two or three?
Yeah, thirty-three. Twenty-three and thirty, and thirty-two probably.
What? How many is it? Okay, so. Are you guys gonna average? Uh, I just.
I'm willing.
You run it, you're, okay.
Before you average it.
Run out of room.
Uh, can you read the numbers again, of those three? For the arts council?
I can't. Uh-huh. That's mine, okay?
Thirty-three. Thirty. Uh, can I reduce mine?
Yeah, you can reduce it.
Down to twenty-five.
Okay. And which one was that, the thirty-three, or that was the thirty?
I think I said thirty-three initially.
Twenty, okay.
And just go down to twenty-five.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I think the other nonprofit that all five of us were trying to fund was Sun Street Center. So I don't know if that, if we'd wanna deal with that funding versus any of them that have us three.
We should do those first. Okay. All right, so which one was it that caught your eye?
Sun Street.
Okay.
That we all have funding for.
Yeah.
Okay, Sun Street.
Fifteen.
Was. Okay.
I got fifteen thousand.
Yeah. Go all the way over, you're not going all the way over. Eighteen-six. Okay. Eighteen-six. Uh. Then the. Deltas. Do you have any five for that? Um. No? Fospa? Any five for that? Okay, Jeep, uh, Greater Victory, any? Oh, I'm sorry, Dan, uh, Sun Street, we already did, just, just, so go back up to. Dan, go back up to what, Fospa? They got how many? But we'll go down, we're going to Fospa then. Go do Fospa. Fifteen thousand. Eight, thirty, was it twenty-nine? Who else? Okay. Well, we're not giving that rounding up, we ain't been rounding up. What is it? Twenty thousand one eighty-nine. Now, who, who put, who put two dollars in? Somebody put two dollars, I, you know. Who's next? Now, just, just. Yeah, yeah, that's, I see. So. Okay, who's next? So all the ones on, uh, uh, Mayor Potem's list is, is done then. Okay, go, go to, yeah, there you go, go to, who's on Burks? Um. There's. Okay. And what is the, I guess you guys been doing the average? Uh, uh, yeah, I go down to twenty. Yeah. Okay, so you got three for Holloway, let's. Oh, well, who, uh, yeah, did you wanna go down, um, to twenty? Councilmember Burks? Did you wanna go down to twenty, or Holloway?
Yes.
So we can keep the average simple. All right. But. Huh? Do, change Burks twenty-one for Jean Holloway to twenty. And so. Did we? Um, Manuel, did we do that? Don't have two? Did Deltas have three, or what, or what amount? Two tens. Two. Two tens and one five. So. What is, um? Is that twenty-five divided by three? So what is it again?
Eight thousand.
Not doing a sense. No s- no sense. Eight thousand three hundred dollars. Three, eight, eight thousand three hundred dollars.
Oh. I'm sorry. No.
And.
Yes, you did. Oh, okay. Yeah.
No, I think you went to the fines versus the one that had three. So arts council never got that.
Right, so they.
So we need to go back to arts.
And, and average?
Anyone that has two, yeah, they have three council members that want.
But we are the arts council. But I lowered my arts council to twenty-five, I think. I told somebody that.
Right, okay. Right, well, what was the, what is the average for the arts council? Okay. Four nineteen?
You're on four nineteen, ninety.
Yeah, yeah.
It's close enough.
So. Well, right, so. The, uh. Um. I, well, let's go, I, I know I had, I wanna talk about. Uh, now we can talk about what we wanna do. I had, um. What was it, uh, Greater Victory, no one else had Greater Victory?
I had Greater Victory.
It's already up there, so what is not up there that anybody wanted?
MPC.
Okay, and I, and I said I wasn't, I wasn't tied to that. Uh. Cuz was that the only one? I think we did Emmanuel. Yeah, I. To do MPC, how many people had MPC, just two? Three? And what is that average? Yeah, just give me the average for MPC.
Yeah. I believe it's fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven.
Don't, don't do the sense, fourteen thousand six hundred.
Okay.
That gets you over the mouth.
No, I, I, well, that's, that's, well, that's where we need, that's where we need to be. It's three people that wanted that, so it has to go on there. And now we have to decide, how do we get, how do we, where do we find fourteen thousand? Five hundred and fifty-eight, fifty-nine dollars from. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Twelve. Forty. What is the total we're at right now? If you could just show me that, please.
Thirty-four. Five, eight, nine, okay.
I think it's, uh, twelve different groups, right? Right, mm-mm. So what I did was, we're over fourteen. Five, nine, eight. I just divided by twelve, that means each group, uh, we can get down there by each group giving back. One thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-five cent. We've been averaging, right? So, or we can get it from all one group, we can get it from three groups, or we can get. Everybody take a haircut. I mean, I mean, is there any group that said they don't wanna take a haircut? Right, so that's, yeah, so I don't, I don't see, I don't see grab, taking one particular group, or taking three group, three groups and saying, you take the majority. You guys agreed on these averages, so let's just reduce them down to four-twenty. By the average, so, somebody could check my math real quick, but I just took. We're over by what, fourteen? Fourteen, five, eight, nine. It's twelve groups, right? Divide, divide fourteen, five, eight, nine by twelve, she'll come out to one, two, one, five, seventy-five cent. So if you could take that from each one. I'll, I'll help you out, Dominique. Yeah, that'd be the same thing. And Sun Street will go down to seventeen, three, eighty-four. Twenty-five. And if somebody can do fourteen, somebody can do twenty and twenty, we can speed it up a little bit. Somebody willing, who's doing? I do that, we do the next one, city manager, I do this one. One, seven, five. I got, uh, everyone's harvest at eighteen, nine, seven, three. Twenty-five cent. Are we really gonna make the, uh, finance people do the sense? Does that make sense, city manager? No. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll just round it off on the last thing, but we don't, we don't want to. Um. Do Delta, do. Did you? Okay, okay, well, just go, go ahead. City, city attorney, read off the last three, if you could, please.
Think. Get it, the right ones here. My right spreadsheet. So I have. I'm gonna go from bottom to the top, Salvation Army. No, Village, I'm sorry, Village Project.
No, never mind, never mind. So, which one you on now? Arts Council? Okay, city manager do it.
I got twenty-three, seven, eighty-four.
Okay. Okay, um, I, it's so. Yeah, I mean, we can do this twenty-five cent, that's no big deal, I'm just trying to save the finance people, uh, but that's right at, right underneath. Was that sixty dollars we have left? Something like that? Okay, all right. Dominique, see if you could round them up to a whole dollar. Does it make sense, eighty-five? So I, so I learned about nonprofit. Is this the, is this the place?
While she's doing that, can I ask a question? I'm a little concerned, and I'm fine with it, but the Arts Council, they were gonna do a mural for thirty three thousand dollars about. If they can't, and what ninety percent of it was to be, and you might know this Alexis. Ninety percent was to be used for staff, for that mural on that site. Down the road, will they present that they can do it, or to use it for what the initial goal was? I guess because of the chunk of the change was for that site, and if not, maybe just uplift all those people more. So I'm just asking, cause I know it's thirty two, thirty three thousand, if that. You can't do it because you can't do it. I don't wanna, yeah, give money for something that they can't do. If that makes any sense, and I don't mean that negatively towards anybody, I'm just. Wanna maximize the opportunity, either for. To maybe do an uplift those people, I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just throwing that as a concern, that's all.
So while he's looking at that.
No, if we, thank you, and if we look at it, they needed twenty one thousand for artist fees. It was just for the artist to conduct the, to the mural, twenty one thousand.
Feel comfortable if they can do it within that.
Yeah, I can't speak on behalf of the artist, and I can't speak on behalf of the Arts Council. But what I can say is that, um, they requested that amount, and they did mention that if they are not able to fulfill. That they would source, do separate fundraising efforts to sort of backfill what they're gonna get, yeah.
Such a big job thing, we'd like to see it.
Yeah, well, yeah, then, then I had a similar concerns where we usually send that stuff through the Arts of History. And so, you know. They're definitely a, a great organization, but when you're talking about funding, and then we don't know where it's going. I mean, it's in the document, right, but it, but. How did that look, where it's supposed to go, where is our art and history and that type of stuff? So some of these things that didn't get funded is different, is definitely ways to be funded in the future. Uh, so that's, uh, four, uh, four nineteen roughly. And so is anybody uncomfortable with anything? Uh, did you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. I did, I'm sorry, I, the numbers that I have actually total four twenty on the rounding. And I'm not sure where the city clerk, where we're different, but I did send her a picture of the accounting piece of it.
And all the other numbers line up?
Yeah, I have eighty four, one eighty four for the Action Council. Twenty, it's, it's eighty four, one eighty four.
So you're saying that should be more than one, four twenty? Her number should be more than four twenty.
Her number should be more than four nineteen, the number is eighty four, one eighty four. Totals, my totals total four hundred and twenty exactly.
Okay.
On the rounding.
Wait, okay, so yeah, just, just had a computer check it, so, so keep on talking while she's.
Can I ask if this can be done? On the art, on the, on the mural, as a. I can't think, as a responsibility, as a duty, that they would present their mural. To the Art and History Commission. As well as the city, uh, because we would be paying for two thirds of it, is that, can then we add a little? I'm not sure what the right word is. A little. I can't think of the word, there's a word. Responsibility, duty, uh, expectation, requirement, that's a good word. That they would have for that twenty one thousand dollars or two thirds of their budget. They would present it to the Art Commission, cause I think they, Art and History Commission has that part of. Their stuff anyway to get to see murals, is that a possibility? I'm just asking the question. Because it's gonna be mostly a city mural. I'm finding either way, I'm just saying. Based on Mayor's comments.
We have, you, anybody want, anybody want to take a stab at it, because, because that's a. Go ahead, that's a concern, that's why I didn't have them, because I thought of the process should go through, should go through the Arts and History and evaluate the mural itself. It's, it's one thing for independent, and I'm not saying don't fund it, it's, it's up there. I'm just saying, what is the process going forward for the community to know? Uh, and wake up one morning, and, and then the mural is there that they, that they paid for, but. It, it ain't, it, it hasn't been through any, um. Any requirements from the city to make sure it's susceptible, to be honest with you, uh.
So yeah, the answer is, it is correct, that it, we'll have to go through the Art and History Commission first. Um, and then, because it will be on a, or a private building, it will also have to go to the Planning Commission, per our code. So if it was on a public building and one of the city buildings, it would just have to go to the Art and History Commission. And so it, it will be a two-phase process for approval, once the design has been put in there.
Yeah, great question. Uh, anyone else? Any, uh, let's take a final look at that, I mean, did it, did it add up, or we still working on that? What? Yeah, no, what? Well, what I'm saying is, what I, what we don't want to do is leave here, and technically it's more than four twenty. Right, we're gonna vote on it, so we don't want to do any more than four twenty, if it's under four twenty, then, then that's no big deal. Right, but.
You have problems.
Mayor staff could, uh, make sure to allocate the rest of the thirty or forty dollars to the. To the, to, to correct the numbers and stay within the four twenty, if that's the, the motion that you want to make relative to the funding.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking for, I just, okay, uh. Well, what, do you have, do you have it already? I mean, I, I want the public to see the rough numbers, and then the city manager said he'll be able to distribute the extra sixty dollars if it doesn't add up. I think somebody in the audience, ma- man, took a picture of it before. It was a. Okay. Right. So, so now we, we'll let the city manager and his finance team distribute the last sixty dollars. Uh, I don't think it's, it's not more than four twenty, so I'm comfortable if somebody's willing to move that.
Let's make a motion to approve it.
Second, okay. Alright, are, any, on the question? All those in favor, use direct sign voting, which is aye. Alright, ayes, abstentions, here none's, ayes have emotion carry unanimously. Alright. Let's go to item number nine, V, review and discuss the twenty twenty five. Item C, the twenty twenty five Seaside Car Week After Action Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, we'll have a presentation from Assistant City Manager Dan Mewes.
That was fun.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager. And we will be, this is our annual, uh, Car Week After Action Report, that we will be diving into. This is not. Alright, just a reminder, everyone, um, Seaside had seven Car Week events, um, during the Car Week. Which, uh, was started on Friday, technically Friday, August eighth, and ran through Sunday, August seventeenth. The first event in Seaside was on Monday, the eleventh, which was, uh, Porsche, the classic Porsche event. There was the Automobile Collectors Expo that was Monday through Wednesday at Embassy Suites. We had the BMW M Sport Event on Wednesday. The Paddock featuring Radwood on Friday. And then on Saturday, we had three events, Concours de Le Mans, Concorso Italiano, and Exotics on Broadway. So just diving into a little bit of the, the data, so for the classic Porsche event, um, the attendance was twenty eight hundred people. They had five hundred cars on display. Not a lot of issues to report, um, some cars did block some of the fire lanes, so some of the things they wanted to look into for the next year was just making sure that Public Works kind of helped. Um, identify the fire lanes, block them off with some cones, add a little bit of extra resources in there to make sure that there was, um. No issues in case fire or PD need to get in there. Um, they wanna work with the adjacent businesses to increase the show space, so primarily Granite Rock. They are looking to expand their footprint a little bit, they kind of, um, outgrew their space that they've been using for the last few years. Um, and so that kind of goes in with requests for a larger road closure. Uh, the BMW M Sport Event, this was an inaugural event, this was the first year that it was held. And they had twenty seven hundred, um, participants attend. Fifty plus cars were, um, on show there. This was, uh, an event that, um, we had very limited communication, if. At all with them, is that it was on their private property, we didn't even know about it until a couple of weeks before the event. Um, so one of the things that we would like to look forward to next year is coordinate with the event organizers. And really kind of get a full detail of what their scope and what they're planning on having, so that way we can help promote and share their event out even more than what we have. On Friday, we had the, the Paddock featuring Radwood, um, this was another inaugural event, um, this first year that they partnered with Concorso. Um, with the organizer there, um, they had twenty two hundred in attendance, um, a hundred and seventy five display cars. Fifty six of them which were actual cars from the eighties and nineties, which was kind of their, their repertoire that they were going for. They were looking at eighties and nineties kind of retro fashion. Um, the only issue for them was, uh, the weather, it was cold and a little bit windy up there in the evening event. Um, they are looking to attract more attendees, uh, by adding more cars for the next year. And they really felt that the Friday night, um, event was, was a good addition, um, for people to come, have dinner, and they didn't have to make a, a. Dinner reservation and wait in line, it wa- it was a nice family-friendly atmosphere. When we look at Concours, Concours de Le Mans, we had about twenty nine hundred in attendance, a hundred display cars. Fifty of them were local cars. Um, they didn't report any issues with us, um, and the organizer is very happy to do work with the city. And they feel that the Concours de Le Mans is a must-do and a fabric of Car Week, um, for those individuals looking for the funky, funky and fresh cars. Concorso Italiano celebrated its fortieth anniversary, um, they had an attendance of thirty one hundred. Uh, display cars were four hundred and sixty one, and they had nine motorcycles this year. Um, they also reported no issues or concerns. Um, this year featured a more variety of cars than in the past typically, they, they do focus on the Italian models, the Ferraris, the Lamborghinis, those type of vehicles. But they had a, a bigger variety, um, that, that was different than their normal scope. Um, they are looking to attract more attendees as well, and, and they want to add more cars and motorcycles, uh, moving forward. So Exotics on Broadway, so this was the big, the big ticket item, um, they had twenty three thousand people in attendance. Uh, they had two hundred and fifty display cars, you know, the, the main notes here. Um, that I think we heard in, in a variety of, uh, different settings is the parking and the traffic was challenging on that eve, on that afternoon. Um, the shuttle service was slow, they did have three shuttles going, back and forth, up and down to General Jim Moore. Um, but the amount of people that were waiting for those shuttles, it, it, getting the shuttle all the way back down and around did take some time. Um, there was some challenges with the freed and pay area. Um, one of the biggest issues was actually accessing the free area if you were on Upper Broadway. You couldn't come straight down Broadway, you had to walk around the T to get around there, so that was an area that was, um. That we discussed and figured out a better way to address those issues. Um, some businesses were affected by the closure, you know, we heard multiple times that some local businesses did close for the fear of, um. Large crowds coming in, um, the main one being Grocery Outlet. Um, still, you know, with the amount of people that comes there, there, you know, we can try and get as many garbage cans and recycle bins out there as possible, but. There's always, you know, the, the amount of trash, um, was still quite substantial. Um, some alleyways were still blocked, even though we do have more security and more staff out there. And then I mentioned the access points, there, you know, really, if you were on Upper Broadway, it was hard to get down, and so accessing the event. Um, did take some little extra walking, and, you know, with the fencing and the sidewalks being a bit tight and amount of people coming through. It wa- it was a bit of a challenge to, um, work it through there. So when we look at the public safety impact, um, so for the Police Department, we did have an onsite command post, um, which was staged at. The corp yard, the Public Works Corp Yard. Um, we had one sergeant and five officers that were assigned to that command post. Um, during the exotics arrest, or the exotics event, there was one DUI arrest. Um, PD issued twenty two, uh, twenty two percent of the traffic tickets during Car Week as a whole. Um, were speeding tickets. Um, we, we all heard about the sideshows that occurred, um, on a variety of different days, um. We had them on the twelfth to fourteenth, and the big one on the sixteenth, the In-N-Out Burger and Home Depot. Um, which did require mutual aid. Um, four twenty four additional officers that came in there, however, there was no incidences leading to arrests, um, during that event, during that time. However, after the fact, um, PD has been able to, um. Track down and they did, uh, impound and make a couple of arrests, two arrests to be precise, by some of the individuals that were at. The Home Depot causing the issues, that they've been working with, um, a lot of local, um, agencies. And they're still putting some feelers out there to get a couple more, um, potential arrests out of that, so. Just because they weren't caught that evening, they were able to, um, address that after the fact. And the Fire Department, um, we had an onsite first aid station during, um, Exotics on Broadway, was at seven oh five Broadway. Um, the Exotics on Broadway team hired an ambulance crew that was also stationed at the, um, first aid station on, with the Fire Department. And so during the event itself, they had four medical calls, and they didn't transport, uh, have to make any transports. I think the, the major call, um, one, one individual did sprain an ankle. Um, other than that, it was, it were pretty minor calls, they did hand out quite a few Band-Aids and, and things like that, but it was, it was pretty, pretty mellow, um, on the Exotics on Broadway site. So when we start to think about Car Week as a whole, Seaside Car Week. Um, some of the economic impact for that, uh, that week alone, we saw a three-point, if you, if we go back a little bit. There was a three point three increase in TOT or occupancy from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. Um, then there was a seven point eight increase in the occupancy and TOT from twenty four to twenty five. We estimated there was roughly two percent increase, um, in total occupancy during that week. And then the estimated occupancy, uh. For the city, we are at eighty four percent out of all of our hotels, so out of all the hotel rooms, um, within the city, it was estimated we're at eight, eighty four point eight percent. Um, if, we got some data from Monterey County, uh, Sea Monterey, so they were at a point five decrease in occupancy during that re, uh, during that week for eighty one point six percent. Um, however. for 81.6%. However, the 4.8 increase in daily, their average daily rates, so the cost of a room, it did go up to $455. And then it was estimated that the county as a whole had 51 million in revenue. So I want to dive into a little bit of these numbers here, and it may be kind of hard to see, but I'm going to use the laser pointer here. So what we have is a graph that highlights the years of Car Week, starting in 2022 will be the blue, 2023 is red, 2024 is green, and 2025 is yellow. So this, this chart here will show our out-of-market visitors, the individuals that came to Seaside. So in 2022, we're at 219,000. 2023, we saw an increase of 25%. We went up to 235,000. 2024, we went to 256. And then in 2025, we're at 284. So these are visitors outside coming into Seaside. So we have the total visits at 359, and then it goes all the way up to 457 in 2025. So then the average days that these individuals stayed within Seaside, stayed roughly the same all the way through. So they're standing a day and a half within the city of Seaside. And then that time spent in the market, so we had 161 minutes in 2022. It did go down a little bit in 2025. But then when we look at the trend of people in our city for a minimum of 10 minutes, so if we start on Friday, the 8th, we started with an average of 40,000 people all the way through. It starts to go up, and then we have the peak this year over in this number here was 108,000 people that made a visit to Seaside during that day of Exotics on Broadway. So you can see the trend going all the way up from 2022. We're constantly going. So as we start to move forward and we start thinking about Seaside Car Week, we know that the people are coming to Seaside. We just need to keep them here and keep them, you know, staying and shopping more in our businesses. So when we look at the economic impact for Exotics on Broadway specifically, survey was done. We had 40 respondents. 85% of the businesses remained open. 71 of them experienced increased sales. 68 had a positive or very positive experience during the event. And then 85% of them supported repeating the event next year. Some of the comments that we pulled out, car should be further apart and utilize the entire event area. There were some concerns about the availability of bathrooms. The Fremont closure, while it was new this year to expand over both lanes, it wasn't productive for some of the businesses. The Exotics on Broadway gated area made it difficult to reach up the Broadway as stated before. And then we need to have more events like this was one of the comments. So then I want to pull some of the data when we start to look about Exotics on Broadway. So I'm going to start with this little chart here on the right. So as I mentioned, we had 23,000 visits on that day for Exotics on Broadway. That was a 2% increase from last year. And then if we look at the previous Saturday, the Saturday directly before, it was a 2,700% increase of visits. And then our average Saturday is a 93% increase. And then so if we look at the restaurants that individuals went to immediately following Exotics on Broadway when they left, these are the top 10 restaurants within the city of Seaside, and they stayed for 30 minutes at these locations. So Jack in the Box had 3,000 people. Buffalo Wild Wings had 2,600. Togo's had 2,100. Counterpoint, 1,200. Redstone and 11. And then as we start to go down all the way to Chili's in the top, rounding out the top 10 at 540 visits, people went, left Exotics on Broadway and went to these restaurants and stayed for 30 minutes.
There's no, there's no way to make that bigger. I like the slide, but we should, you know, next time we see it, take, chop that up to three or four slides, and we should be able to see the numbers. Those are important numbers. And I just, I don't want to interrupt you, but you know, right now you can't even grasp the numbers because you can't read them. So, but thank you for what you're doing. Go ahead.
And then I just want to also show this last little, this last little piece down here in the corner. So this is where individuals that before they, where they were before Exotics on Broadway and where they went directly after. So the majority of them were dining before they came to the event. They were at shops or services, shopping centers, buying office supplies or other related items, or they're doing leisure activities. And then immediately following, the majority went to dining, shopping, and 5%, only 5% of them actually went home directly after the show. So they went back out into the community and visited other places. So this map here, I just want to kind of show this, the top one. This is where the visitors originated from, so their home locations. So you can see that the individuals coming to Seaside for Exotics on Broadway, look at the, a lot of these pockets way up here in San Francisco Sacramento area. We have Carson City. It comes all the way down to LA, San Diego, pockets in Phoenix, Las Vegas, Utah, and even in Denver. So, and I didn't pull out the entire United States, but if you can look at the ones on the west, we are getting a lot of people coming from outside coming down here. And then the bottom, the bottom chart here will show that the average, you know, the average time that they spent. So the big, the magic number that we're seeing that roughly 6,000 people stay between 15 and 30 minutes. But when we look here, over almost 2,000 people stayed for over 150 minutes. So they're coming, they're staying, they're enjoying, they're walking around, enjoying Seaside. So we know that during Car Week, we have, you know, we can always, there's always room for improvement. So when we think about Seaside Car Week and ways that we can improve it, we need to increase our business outreach. You know, we did have, you know, some specific meetings specifically for Exotics on Broadway, but we need to have more outreach for all of our businesses. How can we include everybody for Seaside Car Week for that eight to 10 days that the community will be here? We need to ensure food vendors have permits and business license. You know, a lot of these organizations that are bringing outside food trucks and other places of business, we want to make sure that they are registered within the city of Seaside. We need to increase parking locations, not just for Exotics on Broadway, but for all of our, you know, car shows that we have that are within here. Because, you know, we want to, we want to limit the impact into the neighborhoods, and we want to make sure that individuals know where they can go and park safely. Coordinate with property owners and influencers to deter the sideshows. That was an area that we really need to, it was kind of new to us this year. So we want to make sure, I know the police department's already done a really good job of contacting some of these influencers now to get ahead of the game for next year. But then it will also be working with the Home Depot and In-N-Out and making sure that those owners are aware, like, hey, this happened last year. How can we prevent that from occurring again? And whether it is locking down the parking lot, allowing drive-through only, or having some security onsite to kind of deter individuals from coming in there. So that's an area that we want to work on. Modified vehicle training certification for officers. So this is, the city manager and I were able to go to a meeting with a lot of local law enforcement. And one of the areas that they're working on is providing specialized training for officers so they can determine certain vehicle modifications that makes their vehicles not street legal. And if they can identify those, those are the individuals that are generally causing some of the problems. And then they can rectify it by, you know, the very, the, it could impound their car, they can provide tickets, they can shut them down faster and making sure that they're not coming down to our events later in the evening and causing trouble. It's paying regional Car Week improvement strategy. So whether, whether we are meeting with other local jurisdictions, we are meeting more coordinating with the police departments, with the county, the variety of other areas just to kind of enhance some of these areas that we know are troublesome, and we can have a regional approach together. And then most importantly, brand and promote Seaside Car Week. I think it's very evident right now that we have the most shows in Car Week in the city of Seaside. How can we brand that ourself and make that more of a regional destination? We know people are coming here, but we want people to come and stay here and be in our city for longer. And I think we have a really good opportunity to take that to the next level with the types of events that we have here, ranging from those free events to those other larger kind of more classier events that do have a price tag, but also will bring a different type of individual into Seaside. And then when we think about Exotics on Broadway, you know, we need to have a control plan for exit, for the entrance and exit. I think the one DUI occurred right at the entrance of when individuals are coming in. So we need to really refine that. However, police department did say that they're sure that the exit strategy was the best that they've seen. I think that there's still some refinement there with that. We, like I mentioned, we identified additional off-site parking locations, whether that is working with the school districts, maybe using some of their school lots, maybe working with some other businesses that we can, and maybe it can be fundraisers for these organizations, whatever it may be. We need to figure out a more effective way to address the parking situation so we can be proactive in keeping the attendees out of our neighborhoods. Increase, allocate additional shuttles. I think we, you know, I talked about that, you know, the three shuttles they had, wow, they were 50-person buses. You know, you get 50, 50 people on one bus, but it's taking an hour for that shuttle to go back and make the loop. It is taking a lot longer for people to get down to the event. So if we have shuttles at different locations with different parking, I think we can address that. Increase seating throughout the event. You know, it is a pretty large footprint, you know, other than the benches that are on Broadway. I think if we can identify some, some different seating areas or maybe renting some bleachers and working with the organizer just to have, make it for a more conducive event for people, maybe they'll stay a little bit longer because they're not on their feet all day. They have the ability to sit down, enjoy one of the restaurants that are on Broadway, take a snack to go, whatever it may be. Expand the free admission section. So that was, you know, this was new this year for them to have the paid area and then the free area. And I think that there was, you know, some challenges that they observed with that. But they want to make sure that the free area still has a lot of the same components that maybe the paid area has. So that way, you know, whether it being, having a stage and you can have some local music and some, and some other things going on that still makes that a nice fun place, and they feel like they're not missing out of everything. So I think working with the organizers on that, we will definitely come to a new option for the future. Add additional staff and security to manage the alleys, and not just the alleys, I think it's managing the event as a whole. We, you know, individuals, they like to find ways around the system. And so even though that there was a paid area, people found ways to hop through the fence or cut through different areas. And I think just identifying those, those potential issues from happening and having more staff onsite that can address them in the fly would definitely be helpful in the long run. Additional signage for restrooms and entrances and exits, you know, more signage is always best, especially when you have, you know, at least a mile-long stretch. And if you're, you know, you've got shoulder-to-shoulder people, it's not easy to kind of see the signage everywhere. So I think having a clear-cut map or something that the eventgoers can get, however it may be, so they can, these places are identified. Improve Wi-Fi access. I think that that was something that I've heard multiple times. And I know that there's a little bit more challenge that comes to that, but, you know, we need to figure out a way if we can get some mobile spots or work with AT&amp;T or one of the local providers, whoever it may be, to see if there's a way we can get like a portable tower or something down there potentially to help with that issue. And then last but not least, potentially explore the revised footprint options. You know, we, we've been going with Broadway and Fremont for the last few years. We've, we've made some adjustments over the years because the event has gotten bigger and bigger. You know, there was some concerns this year with opening up both lanes of Fremont, and it did have some challenges. And it was, it was still pretty crowded and impacted times. So we've had quite a few internal meetings, and so we have kind of a proposed option that we are looking at. And this option, you know, we have gotten the buy-off, you know, buy-in and support from our local public safety. They feel that this potentially could be better overall for the traffic flow and just for the overall safety of the event. And so while this is still just a potential, I did want to share, so one thing that we would be looking at, would be looking and still keeping it on Broadway. We would potentially close it at Santa Barbara here instead of going all the way to the intersection. And this could be used as a turnaround for the shuttle. So the shuttle could then come down Broadway and then make a right and then come out for a shuttle, drop off and pick up your location right here on Broadway. And then we would be looking at making the elbow down Del Monte instead. We would have to work and make sure that this little green area would be one-way emergency entrance up to Contra Costa because we would need to make sure that we were working with Sand City and that they would have access out of Sand City, but then the mutual aid would be able to get into Sand City if needed from Del Monte. And then there could be two potential options. If, right now, if you look at it from Palm to Clementina, that is actually a larger footprint than what they had this current year with where it was on Clementina to Amador. But then if we really wanted to extend it all the way, we could close Del Monte all the way to Tioga, and then they could have this whole section as well as Broadway, which would really open it up, provide for more, more space for cars. It would open it up a little bit for the public to walk around. I think that there's a variety of options that could be potentially discussed if it were to go that far. After talking with public safety, police and fire, Del Monte is, is unique in a way is because from Tioga to Clementina, there is no way out of this section. So I think when we, when we heard about the, the traffic issues, if you were here, you were, you were kind of stuck until you got to Clementina. You couldn't turn around or go anywhere else. And that's kind of where the bottleneck was. So keeping up, keeping Fremont open all the way, I think that there's a variety of other ways people could go if the traffic started to go. You know, Seaside residents could, could exit and go up into the, up into Upper Seaside, and it wouldn't necessarily be as detrimental to them as they move through the community. So while this is just an option and nothing is out there, we just wanted to have the council kind of take a look at that and kind of see where we are potentially as we look forward to 2026. And with that, that really concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Very, very well-done presentation. Again, this is a conversation on Car Week. And then this last part about what you guys are thinking about doing for the possible Exotics on Broadway next year. Yeah. Is, is the rough thinking. That's what I'm saying. I mean, they don't need to be commenting on that if that's not what the proposal from the city manager is just yet. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. We're just providing some potentials.
No, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying. Any questions or comments or your thoughts, Mayor Patel?
Yeah, just a couple of questions and I'll tie into some comments. And this one frustrates me, so I apologize. The Home Depot Burger In-N-Out situation, that was not a city event. It may be associated, because you mentioned, you referenced that a couple of times. It may have been in other cities that, or activity area enrolling over here four hours later. It didn't appear to have anything other than Car Week in overall potential for the peninsula to do with our, for our responsibility as a whole. It was just an aftermath or something happened because of the amount of people. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely. It was, you know, just individuals wanting to keep their Car Week, you know, fun going on. And this was just something that goes on in a variety of different communities. And unfortunately, Seaside, you know, had a piece of it.
Okay. And then numbers, 7.8% is significant. Unfortunately, I don't know what, and I don't know if the public knows what 7.8% because we are, all cities are under challenging finances. Do you have any sense of what 7.8% growth is, growth is, is that?
I don't have the actual dollar amount of what that would equate to.
Because if it's 50, 60, 70,000, that's, that's a stat person thought. I'm just trying to suggest that that's significant. Or it's whatever. And this is just an idea and just tossing it out. I know Grocery Outlet had some concerns, and I know when CVS has the fairgrounds, they, they rope off that area, they yellow tape and have security guards. Have we thought about, and I'm not sure who that parking lot belongs to. Have we thought about roping up a section of that parking lot whoever may belong to? So that way their customers, they can let them in, kind of like CVS. Is that a? I'm just throwing out as a concern, question, wondering, because that was one of their concerns, their customers couldn't get access to. Um, because that was one of their concerns, their customers couldn't get access to that property.
And I know we're going to be working with them closely as we move forward. Um, and I I'm pretty sure the Exotics on Broadway team is open to also helping to provide some extra security specifically for the shopping center and their their business to kind of curtail some of that uh negative activity.
Are we looking at more uh buses to provide transportation? Are they looking at more buses?
That is definitely on on the list of um future enhancements.
Someone suggested, are we looking at more handicap parking? Uh, because that seems to be a concern for a variety of people. Is that part of?
That will definitely be um revisited as well.
Okay. And then some of the comments that I heard were um the the paid, the paid versus the non-paid. Can we consider, I'm making this up. You know, like you do in recreation, uh, you know, half price or three quarters if you're a resident. Is that manageable or free? Because sometimes they, some people thought they were shortchanged at the Broadway area versus the Fremont area. Is there any thought process to reduce rates if you're a seaside resident, proof of ID or just make?
We can definitely work with the organizers to see how their um uh ticket management is. And if there's a an easy way to address that, we we can figure that piece out. Um, but we, they definitely understand the challenges with the the free area not being as not having as much as the the paid area, but they want to increase that. And like, that's why I was mentioning that they want to add some entertainment. They want to add some of the um vendors and some other things too, to kind of make it what it was before they added this expansion.
And then I also heard, and I I I noticed it too, actually. On Broadway, the cars did not appear to be evenly spread. And I all, so that way the the whole Broadway would get equal notice for lack of a better word, equal attention. And I also noticed that cars of the exotic type would arrive late er than the opening. Is there a way maybe to spread the cars out from Del Monte and Broadway to Fremont and Broadway evenly? So that way they all get, all the businesses get fair treatment. And then is there a way to even at least share the idea with them? Maybe if it's going to start at eleven o'clock, let's say, the vehicles arrive or try to arrive or should arrive by eleven o'clock?
I know that that is always their goal. They want to have the vehicles there as soon as possible. Um, some of the owners, you know, like to be fashionably late, um, you know, to kind of, it kind of stirs up more of the the drama um with some of those cars. Um, but those are conversations that we continue to talk about and and we will figure out a plan uh moving forward.
And then if nothing, if, but we can spread the cars out more equally across the table, across the broad street.
Yeah, that will, that will be part of the discussion um during the planning.
Just uh lastly, just I think staff did a great job. The uh, the organizer seems to be willing to work with you and work with the city and work with everyone because it's in their best interest as well. And I really like the idea of, and I think it's, we need to do it more frequently, branding that event. So this whole, I would love to see this whole uh Car Week be the, see, it'd be the focus rather than Pebble Beach, but that's just my hope and dream. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Councilmember Garcia is all.
Thank you. I have a quick question, uh, where you detailed the restaurants that were visited the day of. If we can go back to that slide, please. Do you know the, how much money was generated that day?
I don't have the, our, our platform doesn't have the the total, the cost or the money that they they that they bring in. Um, but I I I can also say too that there, this is just, you know, the list of the top ten. All of our restaurants did fairly well that day.
Be nice to have those numbers. And and I'm not asking you to get those numbers, but I'm just saying. Um, so how do we know that they, that people went directly to these restaurants right after?
So this is the way, the basically the way the platform works is um each of these restaurants is has its own specific geo fence. So when they go in there, it it tracks it. And and I do want to point out too that um to get my numbers for for this, I created a specific geo fence that was specifically on Broadway and Fremont, just the roadway itself. It didn't go onto the sidewalks and it didn't go into any of the businesses. So when they left that area, they go into Jack in the Box itself. Jack in the Box is its own geo fence and you have to actually go inside. So we were able to track, that's why it's a thirty minute stay. So these individuals stayed inside Jack in the Box for a minimum of thirty minutes.
So is it accurate to say that three thousand people went to Jack in the Box right after the event? Or does that sum up the whole entire visits?
That's right after the event.
Right after the event. Okay. And then how does Valar help us out when it comes to promoting this Exotics on Broadway event?
So this past year, they they were, they helped do our press release. They helped with our traffic plan to push all that out. Um, as we start to look forward for branding seaside Car Week, the focus will be to work with them to have a nice branding campaign. And they're really good because they're they're um stationed out of the San Jose and the the Bay Area that they can reach out that way. So we, they can push. We can come up with a plan that says, hey, stay seaside for Car Week, right? If you're coming to Car Week, stay seaside. And that's just, you know, coming off the cuff right now, but that would be something that we can look at what that branding would look like. So we can try and reach people and we want them, you know, if if they have that opportunity to come and stay in one of our hotels, that's what we want to try and get to.
Maybe that's something we need to do with Valar. Maybe when we do that branding or promotion, you know, highlight the businesses and highlight the hotels that we do have in our area. And not just really focus on Car Week. Sure, Car Week is the emphasis, but maybe this is something that we can use all year round, right? So people can actually see what's available in seaside. And I guess that's a discussion for later on, but I definitely do think that it would be helpful if we do create videos beforehand when it comes to traffic, whatever the plan's going to be, tell people ahead of time. Maybe even sending um some sort of mail to to people's homes that are mostly directly impacted in those no heavy concentrated areas. Just letting them know like, hey, there was going to be street closures, prepare ahead of time, things of that sort. That's some of the things that we did hear constantly is not enough communication or they didn't know where to park, right? And I think just to cover our bases, because regardless if we do it, people are going to show up here the day after and going to say, you didn't notify me. That's just how it goes. Um, I also want to talk about businesses. How do we, oh, you said businesses were closed. What businesses?
We will have to defer to the Economic Development Director um for that one because he was the one that that did this um the survey and reached out and got their their data.
Because when we say businesses, it means a lot. So I want to, I want to know how many closed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. So thank you for the question. So what you're asking is how many businesses were closed during that day of Car Week or when we were doing the survey?
Yeah, because if I'm not mistaken in the presentation, you said people close in preparation that it might get too hectic.
Yes. Uh, number one, the one that was closed was uh Grocery Outlet. The um, the seaside uh pottery was closed. Um, that's two. The other one that was closed on Broadway was um one of the retail. And um, for the life of me, the name escapes me, but there were four of them on Broadway that were closed and they chose to close on that day. Because number one, the product doesn't sell for that type of event. And number two was that they just didn't have the staffing and how to prepare for that.
So nothing on our end. It was mostly, they didn't have staffing and the product doesn't sell?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then let's see. I heard a statement that kind of caught me off guard. And this is a question for you now. Thank you. We want to attract a different type of individual into seaside. I think the best way to say it is we want to let people know how different we are at seaside. So maybe that's a, that's just my, my two cents because we want to keep seaside the same.
That is different we are.
Understood. Just came out wrong.
No, it's fine. Um, okay. I think uh for for, this report isn't ju- is it just for Exotics on Broadway?
It's Car Week.
Car Week in in general. Do we know the numbers for Porsche and the other? Might have stepped away with that.
The attendance numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, there there's in the present, can you go back twenty? Everyone had over two thousand. Keep going back, Dominique. This isn't, other way to the beginning. Thirty-one for Italiano.
But no comparison as to like year before to?
Oh, no.
That's where I was. That's what what I really wanted to focus on. And then the preliminary plan for it to sort of go on Del Monte. Are we fifty fifty on that or?
That that's just something that we've been discussing. We haven't fully had those conversations with the organizer yet. Um, and I do know that the organizer will, they want to get the ball rolling as soon as possible. So we'll probably be seeing something come to the to the council fairly quickly. Um, so they can start planning because that was one of the things that they want to plan early.
I'm just going to put my two cents out there. I don't think it's spilling all the way down to Del Monte, just me personally, isn't what I would like because it wouldn't benefit Broadway. People are just going to pass by Broadway to go all the way down Del Monte. So I don't think there'll, there'll be enough traffic back and forth. Um, and it just, I think it seeds a little bit more into San City and I I I'm going to, I'm going to be a little bit jealous here. And I don't want San City to to enjoy what we, what we have here. That's just my two cents.
Uh, Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Dominique, can we go back to that slide with the Broadway proposal and just piggybacking off of um my my colleague here? Um, the organizers, are they part of that feedback? Did they provide that? Or was it kind of more thinking their staff provided that idea?
Me as staff, um, we're really kind of looking at ways, trying to hear the, what the community was saying about traffic, parking impacts, and then working with public safety. And public safety felt that this was the best option. Um, in case, just to get people through and and in and out of that area.
Did the organi- are the organizers okay? I mean, are they pretty flexible with with modifications like this?
They they, you know, they had a an idea to kind of do similar, but going all the way up Fremont. And then else in a similar situation, um, we we ultimately are just trying to take in the feedback from the community and work with staff to figure out what modifications would benefit the community.
Okay. I'm I'm going off a limb here and 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 um you might not know the answer to this, but how do the car dealerships there, how do they feel? I mean, and and I don't know if we've surveyed them or involved them, but are they on, are most of them on board with this? Because where I'm going with this is, you know, that's a big stretch of car people. And this is Car Week, car businesses. I'm just wondering why we're not including more, we have the two dealerships, the Porsche and the BMW, but it seems like we could be more cohesive with all of the dealerships. Am I totally out of line here or?
You know, we we haven't, we haven't had those discussions with the owners of the dealerships. So that is something that we could definitely um look into.
Because what I mean, what I'm thinking, I mean, and if 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 it spilled out into into that plaza, that's a controlled, for me at least, that seems like that's a controlled ingress and egress. And also the dealerships can participate. And we would be using Broadway. And that's those streets are wide with roundabouts. I mean, I, I I'm just, if they're already selling cars and their car businesses, maybe they're enthusiastic with our Car Week. I don't know. I just thought that maybe that would be. Um, and then on um the Porsche and the BMW, do we expect to have two separate events next year for each of those? Or, because it also kind of ties into this theme where, you know, Porsche and BMW could have the same, I guess, or do they want to have different days? Do you have any input on that?
I'm assuming um that they do like to have been separate. Porsche has kind of been the Monday. That's what they've been for. And I think that's what people look forward to. They come on Monday, they start their Car Week if they're coming in here um to do with that. And with BMW jumping in this year, I think they're probably looking at a day that didn't have as many Car Week events, right? When you think about it, you want to try and get the most people to come to your event. So you're going to pick something that, you know, is a little bit more open.
Right, okay. Because I kind of envision this like, you know, our our guests like hopping between, you know, here for multiple, like we have twenty nine hundred right on these days, but going to the BMW and then going to the Porsche, and then maybe Subaru does something or Volvo. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just being just wanting to figure out a way that we can collaborate with the car dealerships since that's their industry, you know, and and we're focused. So I mean, I I get it, you know, exotics is different than maybe the cars that we sell uh here. I I don't know, but um I I think asking them uh and soliciting feedback from them might be worth our while and worth our time. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm all done.
Uh, Councilmember. Uh, let's go back here real quick. Uh, Councilmember Garcia is all.
Thank you. I just have one more question regarding you. You said something about impounding cars uh when they have modifications. Would that hinder the exotic ones that come into seaside?
No, but they they, it's where they're really looking at those. Most of the exotic cars are street legal. It's, that's the ones that um the influencers and and those types of cars, they like to do a lot of these special modifications with the uh the mufflers and tires and things like that that aren't necessarily. And so it it could, I'm not saying it could, but I don't necessarily think it it would hinder it too much. I think it's more for the issue of um those individuals causing a disturbance.
Okay. Um, and a lot, I guess it's goes hand in hand with this one. Would it be possible next year to sort of geo fence the hotspot areas that cause commotion less this time around for next year and sort of see where those people are coming from that end up creating that ruckus?
I I I, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Burks.
Simple question. Um, the lemons, it seems like it's continuing to grow. Have we been thinking about, is that enough space for them? I mean, if you compare it to the amount of visitors, right, that are at Italiano, it's almost, they're 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 leaning up to be pretty similar. So I was just curious. And with, you know, the geese and the issues that come with being on the city.
You know, I think the lemons truly enjoy being on um the city hall lawn. And I don't necessarily know if they haven't come and suggested another location yet. Um, I think if if we were to expand anywhere, maybe it would be into the parking lot. To that, it could be a way that we kind of give them a little bit more space. So that way they can stay with where they're at and where, you know, the the people that come here, they know, hey, we're going to see the lemons. It's on the city hall parking lot. Um, you know, there could always be the potential of them kind of expanding over to Laguna Grande, but then you have that potential issue of crossing back and forth, which would 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 be an issue. So you know, that hasn't come up, but you know, if it ever does, I would, I think I would gravitate towards the parking lot first.
And then I would just suggest um monitoring exotic social media because they were much more influencing everybody than our own city social media. And so we definitely need to be just as, you know, as big an influence as they are, if not more. Um, but thank you for all the information and for already being proactive and thinking about what we're going to do next year and opening those lines of communication.
Um, Mayor Patel?
Just one simple one. The concept of being held on Fremont or Del Monte or wherever it be. You're going, you were just thinking outside the box to like one does after a thing, and you're going to come back to the council, provide direction, whatever that be at a later date. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. I think I have a couple of questions and just a couple of comments. Um, you said, uh, I want to, I want to, I want to just go back, you know, how eighty-five, ninety percent of this is privately ran, right? So so I want to just assure the council and the community, we're not in charge of how these things run, right? They come and they ask for a permit. If it's within the standards, then then They come and they ask for a permit. If it's within the standards, then then you you pretty much had to give them a permit. I'm not saying you have to, but we're not running the event and we don't want to be running the event. Because then you take on more responsibility and will be held accountable for those responsibilities. Um, and so something that you said struck me earlier when you said. Uh, the event, I think it was at Porsche, no, it was at BMW. That was late in the game. We didn't know about it and somehow it was okay because, not it was okay, we didn't know about it, but it was okay for them to do. Because uh, it was on their own property, right? I still think we have, they have a a a, I think they still have to talk to us because they're doing something that huge with that many people. Uh, on on their lot, car lot to sell cars, but they're 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 having a entertainment thing. A magic, right? You know, so I think it's a place there where they should be checking in with us so we know. That they're trying to uh, particularly uh, engage twenty-seven hundred people, right? That's what I want us to make sure that we, uh, just because it's on their own footprint, we should have something to do with it. Uh, and that and that's a segue to say, uh, when it was talked about earlier about how do we, you know, I definitely support talking to the car dealerships. But this is not a a a car, Seaside Car Week is not here to necessarily sell cars in all the dealership. Uh, the Porsche, it, what happened was Porsche and the BMW dealership. My understanding is run by the same manager, right? That's why the BMW had a an event. And so they may have it next year. But but for us to say, well, let's think about how uh, the Buick dealership has something, right? I think that's a stretch. We need to stay exactly where we're at and and get that down pat first because we have citizens telling us. You know, the exotics bring a little bit too many people down there, right? And so. You know, uh, the Porsche dealership does it on the day that they do it. For us to be trying to tell them they should be doing it a different day, I I just. We need to be worried about the things we can control and not trying to micromanage each one of these events. Uh, you said there was no issues that some of these things, there were no issues reported. What issues do we have? And that's something I miss. You you had a long list for the exotics, but I didn't see a list for the Porsche. I didn't see a list for the. BMW. I didn't see a list for the the rest of them. So we may not have nothing. But I would have liked to have known that we didn't have an issue, if that makes sense, right? And then we were talking about the averages, right? I like the way you talked about that geo footprint. So when you were saying you just got to. Twenty, what was twenty-three thousand, twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three thousand. That didn't count the people on the sidewalk? So it's standing, that's what I'm saying. So there's a lot of us standing on the sidewalk. And so I just wanted to understand. Out of that twenty-three, you didn't count them when they were not standing, you know, in the street, right? They went back and forth, but I just want people to imagine. That at a certain time, you seen twenty-three thousand people, not include the people on the sidewalk or in the business. Right? Getting something to eat, you know, so that's, that's a lot of people, right? Uh, so I I thank you for that. I thank you guys for that. Um. And then when they went to the the restaurants, I think it's a way that we can next time or, you know, be. Well, I guess we might as well wait till next time. Is, you know, it's an average sale, right? I think we can always get the average sale. Uh, when someone goes in there and we just, you know, it has to be rough, but I think all of those people. Three thousand people times the average sale is a good day for that. You know, that small little restaurant, right? I would imagine. And so, um, hopefully you guys can keep a note of that. And then the hundred, if you go back to page fourteen, I think it just, uh, slide fourteen, a hundred and fifty minutes. Uh, is that at the exotics on Broadway or is that in town?
Exotics on Broadway. That that map is.
So 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 what I'm getting to, so that means they stayed there for that, and that's like three hours, right? If I'm trying to.
You just said two and a half.
Two and a half, I'm sorry. Uh, two and a half. So that's just really the person milling around exotics on Broadway. So we can always guess, I mean, uh, next time to see if they stay longer and they stop. But for example, what is it? Just a counterpoint coffee, you're saying one point, one thousand two hundred people. Went there again, was it after or during?
This was uh, after.
This, they they spent thirty minutes, yeah.
Right, so as soon as they left, depending on what time they went into that fence and then they left the the geo fence, they went there.
And they stayed for at least thirty minutes. We know that for a fact.
That was from the data I pulled, yeah.
Yeah, so I won't, I won't, I won't pick them out, but what I'm saying is. For a a business on Broadway to get a one thousand three hundred people. You know, in that day, you know. That's a, that's a nice chunk of change. I won't, I won't, like I said, I won't, I won't pick them out. But the the question for us is, um, I think. Is how do we get them not to stay a little longer, right? But how do we get? Those businesses, particularly the smaller ones, to be able to facilitate more people because of some people won't buy that business. And didn't want to wait in the line, right? Now, of course, uh, one point was a one point three, one thousand three hundred people. Were not in there at the same time, right? But but we all went down to some of those shops and if it was lined out the door, if it was just too much. I just kept going. So I didn't buy a sandwich. I didn't buy a pizza pizza. I didn't buy a coffee. I didn't buy juice. I didn't buy water. And so that's what I would, I would like for us to work with the small business people about how do you facilitate more people faster? Because that's. That's where fast food came from, right? You know, and so if we're able to do that, then we can facilitate them making more. Money and being more profitable all during the week, maybe. So I thought that was interesting. Um, and then you went to somewhere that said car week improvement strategies, right? And so I think that's part of the strategies is how do we use that data to. Give our small businesses some more assistance. And I agree with the um. The valor aspect of it. I agree with, you know, the branding, the promoting, but I think we we still don't want to get. Not too far, but we want to do it in in consultation with C M Monterey, right? We don't want to try to create our own. Uh, viewpoint when they're pushing out something, but yeah, I I definitely agree with the concept of. Of what the council member Garcia Zola said earlier. And then I did, a lot of people did tell me, and I think we all experienced the the um. The challenges with with that Fremont and the closure. And so I think that's that's something that um. We have to look at. Uh, and then with that, I think, I think I shared that with the city manager before is. Part of that, when you are on Fremont is somehow, uh. The cars were gone, you know, the cars are gone. I noticed stage was stood in it, but cars gone like four thirty. I was out there. Car, I think it was a couple of people that the cars are gone at four thirty. I was the, you know, just me and a couple of other people standing in the middle of the road, right? Uh, but. I guess five hours later, six hours later, when I went down there, you know, ten thirty, I think it was eleven thirty at night, right? Some of the the fences were still up there. And so the community members still had to go around. And I'm thinking, you know, people got home from work, people did this, they're trying to go, go out to buy groceries, they're trying to do whatever. And those streets that were blocked off, uh, were still being blocked off. And that was, that was kind of like a, you know. We we have to solve that and maybe putting it on Del Monte eliminates all that, but I want to speak up for the inconvenience caused by. And that's what I meant about what was the problems that we had. And I didn't see that up there. I I like the trash cans, that's important, but those streets were just blocked off way too long. And I know you guys are working on it. Um. And I I I just want to second what you said about different diff, was it different people? I caught that too. I know you didn't mean it like that. But 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 that's the way it came out. So we we want, we want all type of people and we want all of our residents to go. And I know you agree with that. Uh, uh, but the. The so-called VIP section, again, we don't run this thing, right? It it, you know, it. What is it? You know, I I just don't think we should be getting into their their little so-called business model about how much the tickets cost and all. Because we we don't want to be, we don't want to get in there. We don't want to be supplementing uh, what it takes. But the whole object of having it on Fremont. And any other street was the ability for our kids to be tw- you know, a foot away, twelve inches, fifteen inches away from. Million dollar cars. That's my standard. And I I didn't see that last time because we know someone was put behind the VIP tent. And so they didn't go all the way down the street. So so uh, we're gonna work on that. We're gonna do that better. Uh, I'm not talking to you. That's my segue to say that that me and the city manager and the mayor Proton. Have a Zoom call with the organizer to talk about some of these challenges, right? But but we're not going to get into trying to manage uh, the event. We had to manage what the seat, what the city's response is and how we facilitate it. Um, and um, those are my comments. I really love the information. About how much uh, economic vitality that it brings to. Economic vitality that brings to the city. That is it right there. Uh, people are coming down here. Um. And, you know, they're coming down to see cars and they're coming down and they're pretty much hungry and want something to drink. So it's hard to. Get them to buy the other things. So yes, some stores will probably close down. Some stores, you know, they don't sell something, so it's a hassle for them to open up. And and you know, we're, that's unfortunate. Um, but if we want to become that city. Uh, and then I would have liked to seen the la- larger map. I would have liked to seen maybe a dot from Boston. Right? Some of these people drive from Florida and stuff and and you know, and and and. And only, only reason why I say that is because we had a technology. It doesn't cost us to get that information, right? So, um, and that'll go back to the branding of of people saying, I I did see you on social media. I did, I did see that and hooking up with the volar with um, the exotics on Broadway. Uh, it it it's ways to to push those videos down to Florida. And other places up to Boston, up to May, all all the way to East Coast. And people, uh, they know they're coming to Seaside. They know us as as a Broadway in Seaside. Um, but if we tell them you can stay somewhere, you can eat somewhere, you could plan it this way. Uh, I think we can have an impact. Uh, and then my, my last thing, two, two or three points is. You know, eighty-five percent occupancy is quite a bit, right? So I believe that's the the average that you guys said. And and so it's kind of hard to to get it up above that. Because I think even the smaller motels are charging four or five hundred dollars. For a room, right? Uh, because because the ones closer to Pacific Grove Monterey were eleven hundred dollars. And they average three hundred now, right? But they were eleven hundred dollars a night then. Uh, I. You know, I heard some some rooms were going on, some rooms going for on Pebble Beach, they were going for ten thousand dollars a night. Ten thousand, and that's not a lot of money for some of these people. Forty thousand dollars is not a lot of money for a guy driving a three hundred dollar. Car on the weekend. And but we want to invite all of our guests and be welcoming. So I think this is a good start. I look forward to um, uh, the presentation again about, uh, yeah, about uh, any conversations we we will have with it. Um, the promoter, um, but it's not, um. You know, it's it's not our event. It's it's facilitation because uh, if we start trying to. Uh, micromanage how it's done, then all of a sudden we take on a lot of liability that we don't want to take on, in my opinion. Uh, but I do think you guys were responsive to the citizens' uh. Um, concerns and I think we'll get better at answering them. Um, so, Councilmember Garcia.
I just had one suggestion. Have we thought about how we sort of support the businesses? Couple of days before Exotics on Broadway, like let's say Other Brother hosts uh, a car week night or things like that, or or. Happy hour spot. Are we encouraging that? Are we supporting that, them in that aspect?
Through the mayor? Yes, so we are encouraging businesses to take advantage of the time during that week. To start, like you mentioned, Other Brother, they do have events. Deja Blue has events also, and we encourage all the smaller businesses, special, but the Wajakenya, this was their first year doing that. So they're already thinking ahead what they can do for that week to bring in the customers that are in the area.
And and to the mayor's point, are we partnering with C Monterey and just pushing that information out there? Because I know they have like an events calendar. A car week page, things to do around town throughout that week, even though our event might be hosted on a weekend. You know, we still have Monday through Friday in Seaside that's open. And I think if we encourage. And really leverage our partnerships with those types of organizations, so the whole week is busy as well, could be pretty, pretty good for. For our community and businesses as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, no, that's fine. I I think part of that is, well, well, before I forget, that should be part of our briefing. Um. Presentation next time is what we're doing, right? So I I would like to hear about any of those partnerships with the small business that they are. Uh, you know, giving coupons away. You got, you got to, you know, you got to put skin in the game, right? So those people are, they're on the peninsula, right? And of course, they're coming for exotics, but how do you keep them? The 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 day up, right? But how do you keep them uh, Monday, right? You are at Porsche and how do I get you down on Broadway or any other restaurants for a meal? Well, they're gonna have to offer me something or I have to know about it. And so I think that's a great, great idea. And and I look forward to hearing that type of plan uh, later. Let's go out to the public and then we'll come back and and close. Uh, with the council's comments. Uh, public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
It's like, I know I have one minute. Dan, amazing report. Great, amazing report, honestly. When I've done all these sales reports and all of this stuff, I mean, it's fantastic. It made me really excited and I had a speech prepared that's completely different. So I'm gonna kind of do a little blend because there were a lot of questions that came up that I feel like um, I should answer. So, um. You know, everyone can afford Pebble Beach or Bayonet because those those events cost hundreds of dollars, but exotics is free or even just thirty bucks, which isn't that much. It's accessible. It belongs to us and that's what makes it really powerful. When we look around, thousands of people came here. They traveled for hours just to be part of it. There were no fights, no vandalism, no shootings, just joy, just pride, just seaside shining. Our event ended at four o'clock. The fairgrounds had a party until ten o'clock with alcohol and DJs. That crowd is what spilled into the streets of Seaside. It wasn't our exotics on Broadway event. That brought that crowd to start those events at In-N-Out and Home Depot. So we need to make sure we work with Monterey to police to ensure that they get their crowds onto the freeway. It was great to see Jack in the Box as the number one um, sales with three thousand. Because that's the same parking lot where Grocery Outlet is. So Grocery Outlet could stay open. If Jack in the Box can make, you know, have three thousand people there, then Grocery Outlet can make some money. So Grocery Outlet didn't need to close. Um, Broadway in Fremont should start after the light so the shuttle can come down um, Broadway. And then um, handicapped and seniors should be allowed to get into the paid entrance. Just should be kind of common sense. If someone's on a wheelchair, someone's on a walker or a cane, let them in that X, that in, um, that entrance. I did, um, I do follow a lot of the influencers because I'm a car girl. And um, there were some cars impounded at um. Embassy Suites by C H P. There was a car that allegedly looked like a highway patrol. It was brown with a stripe and they took the person's car. And I felt like that was a really bad look for city of Seaside, for someone who's coming into town for exotics to have their car taken away. That was just my personal thought. I love the police. I love our chief and everybody here. Um. We should also maybe offer meet and greets with some of the exotic owners. And then Pro Tim, you said these car events, they should schedule, um. You talked about the cars coming in late, but they schedule arrivals with these guys. These exotic car guys are celebrities, right? They may be at an event at Quail, they may be at Pebble. So they're coming from all different places because there's different cars, um. Homes in Pebble Beach, so they have a Ferrari home. So they'll all get on the road and ride together. So they arr- they arrange to arrive at the same time. And so people line up, all the YouTubers, the influencers, they're excited to. You know, tell the people rev your engine, pop your engine and videotape them when we come here. So those are the kind of things. So. Pebble Beach shows luxury, Seaside shows possibility. So we are seaside, we are pride, we are community. Great job with this report, you guys.
Linda, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm on my home computer now. Um. Uh, Dan, I want to say, I think it was the week before car week, you got the software. Maybe it was two weeks before. There was not a lot of time before car week. To learn about geo fencing and where are you gonna fence it and. to learn about geo fencing and where are you gonna fence it and get that all done. I'm, um, you're reporting on, again, it's relative, it's, my memory is it's new software for you and your team. And congratulations on that. I did love um, the ID, the design you had for coming all the way down Del Monte. I understand the concerns that maybe San City would get some business. Um, I did have a friend buy a car at a car dealer during Car Week. Um, they just happened to need a car then. They weren't in for the show. Um, I uh, support the training for the police for the cars, so they know what's street legal, what's not. Um, I didn't know if we could have the closed roadmap put on the buses, you know, the MST buses advertising. So the people who are driving every day see those maps over and over and over again, saying, hey, these roads are gonna be closed. Um, the, I, the alleys make more bathrooms, more shuttle buses. I mean, what do you need, like twenty buses? You gotta have like twenty, thirty buses. Maybe the buses can run up and down Fremont, north and south, either side and up Broadway to take people to food. So people don't have to walk up the hill or all the way down the hill or back. You know, we can have a, a seaside food shuttle. Maybe if you stay in Seaside, there can be exclusive shuttle bus. And that can also take you to restaurants. I, when I was having my own thought, I, the turnaround, you have to have a turnaround for the buses. That, that has to be part of this redesign is to get that bus, those buses turned around and moving. You know, maybe these cars could go up the center of the car auto mall. And then on the streets that come in, people could still get in and out of service at these dealerships. I, I don't know why all these dealerships wouldn't want to show off their cars and have sales during quote unquote Car Week. Um, I, I just would seem bizarre that they wouldn't want to have a thing. Uh, the parking, the number of cars in town clearly, you know, sometimes I think, how do we have water for a whole nother seaside, even for if it's just for a day or a week? And I think uh, we did not go to Le Mans because it's just too tight. There's too many people down there. Parking, all the people, it's just too tight. I think it's grown. I'm, I'm sure we have, there's lots of ideas. And I wondered how the pot shops did. Did, did they? Don't we get a lot of tax money from the pot shops? Um, thank you.
Rosalyn Green, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. Um, I promise I won't take the entire three minutes because I just want to say, great report. I want to say um, job well done to the city of Seaside. Keep up the good work. Of course, after every event, um, you go into deliberation, you debate on it, you assess, you um, you know, analyze, you do all those things. There are always going to be areas of um, improvement. And so I think that um, as long as we are, are having these conversations, and I want to say thank you for having the conversation with us, with the community, to get our feedback and our way in. Um, and so as long as we are constantly finding ways to improve, to enhance, um, to just build our, our city. And like the previous speaker said, you know, um, it's happening in, in Pebble Beach and other areas. Why not Seaside? Um, and so I think that we're doing a good job. I don't think that we need to take away from anything. We can figure out um, some of the, the bloopes and blunders um, and how to address those things um, in a way of, again, improvement, but continuing to build on what we are already doing. You know, finding ways that um, even those that felt their uh, businesses were um, stated that the, the car show was a lampshade on those businesses. You know, let's have those conversations and sit down and talk about what it would look like um, for those businesses uh, in the next year as we continue to, to grow. Um, I'm happy. I mean, I'm always amazed to see how far um, people will actually park and walk to get to the sink. It is huge and Seaside is on the map. Again, good job. Thank you for a great report. And thank you council and mayor for, and city manager for a job well done.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you. Public comments clause, the mayor put in.
The idea of the cars arriving at the same time was not my idea. It was the, the business owner's concern. Um, and then to be spread apart. And then I thought it was uh, very positive. Some of the business owners, uh, I think the fanciest restaurant in Seaside sold hot dogs uh, in front of his store. And one of the uh, thrift shops uh, sold water and they made a, a, a good amount of money. So I think it's a mount, a matter of public and creative thinking where they can all participate uh, in different ways that, to find out with selves. And I think that's just part of the, the continued improvement is just those ideas that are new and fresh and what works. Thank you, mayor. I appreciate that.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Uh, uh, council member Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just as a final comment for me, you know, uh, during this week and during this, this day in particular of exotics, it's one of the days that makes me feel uh, the most proud uh, to be a seaside resident and a seaside council member. Uh, of course, I'm uh, proud of my city all year long, but this particular day makes me feel um, that our city is really pushing forward amongst other cities and uh, is doing well. So I, I'm thrilled that this council is uh, dedicated to continue the exotics on Broadway and to explore options. Uh, we, we heard one caller said something about they bought a car that day. You know, every time a car sells down there, I believe we get um, a sales tax from that sale. And the car dealerships are kind of what keeps the, the city uh, in, uh, helps with our, with our finances, with our bottom line. And the car dealerships contribute a lot to, to the city of Seaside and to our general fund. So uh, every time we, car sells down there, it's good for us. So including them, I think is important. But I'm, I'm excited for, for next year and, and I'm all on board for the exotics and seeing how we can improve it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was my final comments.
Yeah, thank you. I, I didn't mean to say that we shouldn't include them. My, my, my comment was, you know, the seaside auto mall is open. So I agree with you a hundred percent about how do we sell more cars during that week? And I, and I think the, the dealerships know better than anyone else as opposed to us trying to pull them in to, to this excitement. But I agree with you one hundred percent. Um, we support our, our car dealerships. Uh, I have one more question about slide fourteen. I'm just, I'm looking for, uh, for example, just, um, what is it? The Other Brothers, right? I'm just wondering why them being on the corner there, they wouldn't, unless I'm missing it or something.
I would, I have to double down and look at, further down the data to see where they fill in that list.
They may just come down a little bit. Okay, okay.
That was just the, the top ten.
Oh, right, 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 right. You would think they would, yeah.
Just through the mirror on that issue.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
They said that was their busiest day of the year.
Yeah.
It just, I mean, uh, same bad or good, that's what they said was their busiest day of the year. I'm not sure with that.
And, and that could be too, because not all the businesses have actually been in, in the system through uh, this network. So we have to still um, tell them the, the platform. And Other Brothers still relatively new. I don't think they're, they're in there. I have to look and double check.
Well, second ago, you said they're probably down lower, but now you're not sure.
I, I, I have to, to, to think about it because there were some newer businesses that, because Moline isn't, they're not included either.
Right. And no, no, that's, that's what, you know, because um, I think other people may look at it and then, because you know, like the mayor put him said, right? It was, it was, I think Moline's was selling, you know, um, classic hot dogs, right? And so we want people to be innovative. And I was just wondering what the numbers was for the Other Brothers. But if they're not in the system yet, I understand that. That's, that's okay. That's not our fault. Um, I, okay, anyone else? I, I, I don't have any other. I just, I just thought this information was wonderful. And I think the city manager for uh, bringing it to us uh, in time uh, so we can add a data for Car Week because this is a lot of, you, you can't, it's hard to do anything if you can't measure what you have done. And so, thank you so much. All right. Yes, uh, yes, sir.
I just want to second those comments. I want to thank both the city manager and Mr. Daniel Mewes for this really good presentation. It's good to have the numbers physically now uh, and, and see it in real time and, and give that back to our constituents. Really solidifying back why this event is important, not only to the businesses, but to our local economy. And I think as we look into um, you know, being financially stable when it comes to budget deficits, you know, this is a great example that regardless of what's going on, people are still coming into Seaside and spending in Seaside. And people are, are being employed, which I think is important to, to also emphasize. So really impressed with this presentation and looking forward to see how you make use of this data.
Yeah, that's a good point. No, you said, thank you so much. That's a good point about uh, what those numbers really mean. That means that business can stay open at least for another day, right? If not week. And sometimes some of these people are making a whole monthly payroll. And, and, and what I wanted to mention was, when I was thinking about it, you know, it's, it is an impactful event. It does put us on the map. And you would think um, a city like Miami, Florida wouldn't need to be put on the map. But I believe they just done the IndyCar race down in Miami uh, uh, last year uh, because they wanted to keep their world-class status. And you think about closed streets and closed businesses, you, you, you had to close down a part of your city for those uh, IndyCar races, Formula races. But the city said, no, we want to be talked about around the world, even though we are already Miami, Florida. And so I think Seaside is punching above our weight and we will continue to do that. And I think the council uh, for uh, pushing us forward. All right, let's go to the next item. Um, it's council's request, ten A, uh, new council members' requests. Is that city manager? Oh, I'm sorry. It's number one. Uh, we're gonna give the, uh, the mayor pro temp his ninety seconds to convince us that we should put this on the agenda to talk about. Uh, mayor pro temp.
I'm requesting that we review the mayor's youth fund to determine and clarify what we define as scholastic beyond the definition concerning schools and education. I'm also requesting that we review the amount of contributions as the three thousand dollars as the mayfair was created over fifteen years, fifteen years ago and costs have gone up. Finally, I want to clarify the money and how it can be used for and what it can be used for.
That's it. Uh, thank you so much. Is there uh, council member Miller?
I'm one.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Second.
All right. The city manager will uh, put this on a future agenda. Uh, and so what are, what are you looking for, for the staff to, to bring back in a sense?
I'm looking at the three thousand dollars. Is that, is that too low, too high, whatever it is? I'm looking about how can we discuss it tonight? I just added that tonight. Can it be used for staff? Can it be used for balls? You know, what, how, let's better define what it can be used for. And I'm looking at the definition of the word, I think in the report is scholastic. Does that mean, do we pay for um, educational programs or books or we pay for whatever? Or do we, we do it the more culturally inviting and inclusive of, of the schools, but not necessarily for classroom activity? Yeah. I'm not saying right or wrong.
No, 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 I got you. Just, and scholastic could mean, uh, of course it means academics and, and could mean uh, athletics, but it may be an upper limit on supporting scholastic activities. Or does it make sense? Hey, you know, this, you know, the kids are getting more grades, but that doesn't mean this is right to fund it, right? Because this is, no, and I got you. I just threw my thing in there, which is we can do scholastic, but how far do you stretch that? Because that could be stretched. And they'll bring it back and then you guys will make your decisions. Um, I, let me just ask the manager, when, when do you see that uh, down the road?
I'd say the first meeting in December at the latest.
Okay. All right. Um, any other uh, new council members' requests? Uh, city managers, a follow-up on anything?
Not at this time.
Let's go to the city attorney, city manager, city council mayor's comments, report on committee assignments. Uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Um, last week I had the honor of attending and serving as a speaker at the annual League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach. This event is an invaluable forum, forum where city officials and staff convene to discuss key issues facing municipalities across California and share best practices. Um, the conference provided multiple opportunities to engage with our peers statewide, gain new perspectives on emerging legal challenges and deepen my understanding of evolving policies. And I'm happy to be able to bring those resources and that knowledge back to Seaside um, as I work through various issues with the city. I also had the privilege of attending on Saturday, the Seaside Stars program. And it was a wonderful event with lots of heroes of Seaside present.
Thank you. What, what did you speak on at the conference?
Uh, yes, thank you. I spoke on the California Voting Rights Act and in particular, the proactivity that the city of Seaside has taken with respect to positioning our city with respect to a potential request for districting in the city.
Uh, thank you so much for keeping Seaside out there, um, keeping us on the forefront. Um, city manager.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I also had the opportunity to attend my first annual Cal Cities Conference. And I want to uh, again, give a shout out to city attorney, Sheriff Damon, who did a fantastic job representing the city of Seaside uh, to, to other colleagues in California. Was also able to attend the Seaside Stars and the birthday at Oldemire, both fantastic community events. Was able to attend the Seaside County Sanitation District and Seaside Housing Collaborative Meetings uh, earlier this week. And then uh, also got to meet with uh, the members of COPA, the Communities Organized for Relational Power in Action, again, at the La Glacia, the San Pablo Church uh, to continue conversations uh, in our community about information and resource sharing. And that's it at this time.
Uh, thank you, council member Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, um, I had my uh, CHS meeting uh, that I'm a committee um, director for. And we have a, they have a property on Broadway in Seaside. That's the family center across from the post office. And there, uh, today we uh, approved a bid to do, uh, to fix the carport that has some water damage. And it's about a hundred and seventy thousand with a twenty-five percent contingency cost to get that repaired for the family center uh, in Seaside, which is uh, good for CHS. Uh, CHS is uh, also looking at this time for a new executive director. The executive director, um, Robin McCray has uh, retired or is in the process of retiring. So that uh, is going on now. And we're hiring a recruitment firm to hire a new uh, C, CEO. So that's uh, my committee assignments. And then I was uh, lucky enough to uh, go down to Long Beach as well for Cal Cities. I listened to Sherri. She was, was uh, articulate and uh, really shined a light on Seaside with the Voting Rights Act and uh, explained our situation, I thought, pretty, pretty thoroughly. And also I was at the Seaside Stars uh, event on, uh, on that Saturday. And last, it uh, came to my attention that our uh, own city clerk, Dominique Davis graduated this week with a master's. Uh, I think it's in public administration. And so um, I wanted to make sure that she got a huge shout out for that. And I believe she even got to walk and graduate this week. Is that right? Yes. So congratulations. Uh, and uh, we wish, we are so happy to have you and, and, and congratulations on that huge achievement. So that was all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Burks.
I was able to attend Seaside Stars as well. Uh, thank you to our staff. It was a great reception. The weather was beautiful. Um, and I have to say, being a city council member, my favorite part is to learn about the history and that we have so many people that are able to continue to share. Um, and I have to say, being a city council member, my favorite part is to learn about the history and that we have so many people that are able to continue to share. Especially when others maybe aren't able to for their own families. And so to have that out there is great. Um, I also attended Seaside Raiders homecoming and I want to thank the board and all of their volunteer coaches. You know, they're coaching our youth. They're being strong role models and going above and beyond just to provide, provide a really strong extracurricular program to our youth in Seaside. Um, and then the 71st birthday was really, uh, definitely highlighted the cultural diversity that we have here in Seaside. It was welcoming, inclusive for everyone from littles to older adults. Um, so it was just a great event. So again, thank you to the staff and everyone that put that together.
Councilman Garcia as well.
Thank you. Just like my colleagues mentioned, I was also able to attend California League of Cities, uh, really great conference to connect with local state and local leaders, um, and hear about the successes that their communities are facing, but also the challenges that their communities are facing. It was great to also see some of our neighboring communities provide some, uh, workshops. Thank you, uh, city attorney for, uh, being there and being a voice. I think it really showcased how strong Seaside is and the resilience that we have and how eager everyone is to learn and contribute to, to share their, their insights. So it was really great. Uh, and what was funny is I, I got like two comments about exotics on Broadway from people that weren't even from the city, but they knew about the event. So I think, again, just solidifying your good work and, and the efforts that our, that our city staff are doing. And just getting to learn about all things California, but also the legal challenges that we're going to be facing with immigration, which I think I took very seriously in those, uh, discussions is how can we continue to protect our communities? And also prepare ourselves for potential grant cuts, budget cuts, federal cuts, and, um, ways in which we can, one, prioritize public safety in our communities as well, especially in, uh, way in potential natural disasters. So that's all I have to report out.
Uh, Mayor pro temp.
Yeah, I attended the Seaside Stars event on Broadway, believe and confirmed by residents on that was truly unique and special event that highlighted residents. I know it changed the life of honorees and family members attending. Just to showcase that, one of the stars, the new stars went to a senior dance today. And he was still wearing his VIP pass and he was still glowing after a week. And that's, that's impactful. It's always great when we can change lives, doneries honored and enhance the life, the lives and hearts of Seaside residents. I do believe in the operations area. We can do better and next we, we, we will. I attended the Monterey Salinas Transit Meeting. Uh, they replaced 22 pair of transit vehicles for the rides, programs that services, uh, seniors, veterans, and those with special needs. Tended Foster Park cleanup at Farrelone's, um, park. Foster throughout Seaside is a great asset to the city. Tended the Seaside Music Festival. Uh, the event was, uh, a business and community success. I really want to thank, uh, Darryl Chote on a personal level and hopefully all of us for his vision and making that happen. Darryl was the man that ran it to my mind into what I saw. Uh, ran the show and he was, uh, he put himself out there. So congratulations, Darryl. Tended Fire Department Open House. It was a great day of showcasing our great fire department and creative, uh, fun environment. I appeared that they had more booze, more people than past years. It was a nice day and congratulations. 71st birthday. Of Seaside was a real nice event. Thanks to the staff that assisted. Farmer's market of the last, not today, but the, like, ten of the last two weeks prior to that, tenants seems to have improved. I'm hopeful the residents will continue to support that. And lastly, I wanted to thank the, um, police chief and the city manager. Approximately two weeks ago, um, Alexis and I hosted a, uh, business listing session. And, um, they, um, made a variety of recommendations. Jose made notes of those recommendations. The city manager, uh, and the police department already has acted on that. Some of the issues that they had two weeks ago aren't happening today. City manager met with staff on some other concerns and they're going to act on that. So the three or four businesses that I talked to as a follow-up were very appreciative and, uh, of their city manager and police chiefs and Jose's, uh, participation. Thank, uh, our councilman Arzola for helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Just attended the, uh, Mrs. Jackie Craig had celebration of life. And so, you know. It was solemn, well, I won't say solemn, but you know, it was a celebration of her life and, and, and it was a life well, well spent in her community, uh, for the majority of it, of Seaside. Uh, I think that the number was she sat on the, uh, Seaside Planning Commission for 25 years, I believe the number was. So a lot of leadership there, a lot of, uh, positive growth, uh, in this city. Uh, went through that planning commission, went through her eyes, her thoughts and her strategic planning. So we want to thank her for that and all the other nonprofits that she served on. I attended the Seaside's first annual, uh, hear that city manager? First annual, uh, music festival, uh, hu- it was a huge success, in my opinion. Uh, you know, it wasn't supposed to be thousands of people. Uh, it was supposed to be the crowd that showed up there. And I know a couple of council members came in throughout the day. Uh, but it was a huge success and, and my thoughts, uh, and I want to thank Mr. Chote for having a vision. Uh, something he mentioned to me at least about two years ago, if not longer. And so working with the Small Business Association down there, uh, they put it together. So we want to appreciate our business owners for continue to try to, uh, make things happen on Lower Broadway. And that was one thing that, that was well done, uh, on Lower Broadway. Uh, attended the Seaside High 19th, class 1970, 55th class reunion. A great group of people. Uh, again, this, they graduated from Seaside High 55 years ago. I don't know where, some people were that 55 years ago. But, but those people are still getting together and I just thank them on behalf of the city for continue to meet here. And, um, what their vision was as young people going through high school, graduating, and of course they, some people moved, moved around the world. But the things and aspirations and the hopes and the vision that they had back then, I think some of them seen the changes when they got back. Uh, attended the Tamse Rail Committee, uh, meeting. Like a couple of other people attended the Cal Cities Annual Conference. Again, I want to thank, um, the Monterey Bay Division of my peers for electing me as the chair of the Monterey Bay Division, uh, three, uh, the three surrounding counties, uh, representing the 17, uh, cities. Uh, and so that was an honor to be elected the president of that. Uh, what we're going to be fighting for, uh, because that seat to give, that, that position gives me a seat on the Cal Cities Board of Directors. Representing all the cities, uh, all but 10 cities in the state of California. And what we're arguing for, fighting for is, um, increased local control, more workforce, housing resources, and increased economic development policies. That, that'd be my focus. But being on that board allows me to, to put my voice representing the city of Seaside, uh, at the state level. So I am so honored to be in that position. Some of the things that we talked about at Cal Cities, and I think it was mentioned before, but how immigration policy changes have and will affect this city. Uh, as you know, we are a city built, established by immigrants, you know, all of us here back in 1956 came from somewhere else. And so we're always inclusive and, and diverse. And we want to make sure that we are talking about how do we, um, make sure the resources that we're in control of are shared equitably, everybody's included, and understanding diversity is our strength. That, that, that never goes away. Uh, then it was also, we talked about how even small cities need technology plants. And so I know the city manager has something that he understands us, doesn't, you know, he's comfortable with that. But, but one thing they talked about is how is that technology plan? You, you did, you touched something? How, how that technology, uh, can be and should include our first responding responders in the department, right? How do we make sure our first responders are benefiting from this new technology that's out there? And just the third highlight of some of the stuff we talked about at the, uh, conference, uh, using development agreements to build community benefit projects. And I had a, uh, opportunity once again to run into our, um, labor brothers and sisters, uh, particularly the, the, the Northern California Cooperatives Union had, had a booth down there. And, and we look forward to having a, a conversation with them and how do we make sure as we continue to grow, that we are supportive of those that, those people that built the middle class, which is our unions. And how do we make sure that they are receiving their fair shake on jobs and opportunities, uh, particularly as, uh, Seaside grows? So I look forward to having that conversation with the council. Attending the Seaside Stars, I, I think the mayor pro temp said it exactly, you know, people are just, uh, so thrilled that we continue to, uh, honor people and acknowledge people, acknowledge their contributions in this city with that, uh, program and naming them as stars and, and putting their names, uh, in cement for the next several generations. I want to thank, um, uh, the founders of that concept stars is Annalisa Mitchell and Franco Pacheco for continue to, um, move us forward, look forward. I want to thank the, um, rec department and the city manager for, you know, making sure it was a classy event, spending the money that it took to make sure it's a classy event. That's really how people perceived it as a classy event. And sometimes, uh, you have to spend a little money. So we appreciate you guys spending a little money for that because those, you know. People can either leave with a, a positive taste to their mouth or a taste that, well, this thing's a little bit understated. And you can't get that back. I'd rather people leave with saying, hey, that was, that was, that was something to be at. You missed something. And I think everybody did. And I want to thank the, uh, we had a special guest, the honorable Sam Farr. I want to thank him. He, he's been such a leader on, um, the Central Coast. I want to thank him for everything he has done. Uh, he's, he's retired now, but he's still out there and he's still advocating for what's best, uh, here on the Central Coast. So we thank the honorable, uh, former Congress member, uh, Sam Farr for being in attendance. Uh, I shouted out to assistant city manager Mewes and the city manager already, uh, for efforts to ensure, uh, the honorees day was special it was. I attended the annual Dewali night, uh, at the Oldemire Center was very fun night, eventful night, uh, singing and dancing. And, uh, they highlighted a couple of young people that did, did great jobs representing their community. It was good food, uh, great entertainment, and it's really a week, a week celebration. Dewali is a week of celebration of, of Hindu celebration of how, um, light overtakes darkness and good over evil. So we want to thank the Hindu temple Monterey Peninsula for hosting that here in Seaside. Attended the, uh, uh, the pastor doctor, uh, Jones and First Lady Jones, uh, 11th pastorio and wife anniversary, uh, at Emmanuel Church of God in Christ. We just want to appreciate them so much. Uh, Seaside is a better place because of their ministry. So we want to thank them. Tended the city's 71st birthday, a celebration at the Oldemire. Uh, it was inclement weather, uh, for you guys that never been in the military. That, that means inside weather. Means a little rainy, uh, but, but it was packed and everybody seemed to have a good time. They even came out, uh, knowing that it was going to rain. So, uh, we want to thank the Recreation Department underneath the leadership of, um, uh, Mr. Mewes there. Tended the Seaside County Sanitation District Meeting. Attended the North Monterey Mosquito Abatement District Meeting. One thing that, that they mentioned and one thing that we do is really mosquitoes, right? But after these rains, heavy rains or light rains, and you know, summer's over, rainy season, are you going through your yard, your backyard and making sure there's no standing water? You know, so really check that. Uh, and we ask people with the bigger yards to check because, you know, that standing water may be way back in the back against that fence. But guess what's on the other side of that fence? Someone else's house and their kids and things of that nature. So check your property, uh, and, and particularly the city. If we find any areas, then the mosquito abatement people come on out. Uh, see, attended Seaside Housing Collaborative. Uh, we had an update on the RFP on some of those parcels that the county, that the council allowed us to, uh, look at, to, uh, build some type of small ADU on. Uh, as we, uh, picked that. That's, I almost said developer, but it's, 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 yeah. It's, it's a little ADU, but I guess it is a developer, right? Or the people that's doing it will definitely bring it back to the council and keep the council in the loop. Uh, then tended, did I say this? I said this is a high school. All right. I want to thank the city attorney and the city manager for attending, uh, the Cal Cities. And I know they brought the, uh, city engineer too. It's such a wonderful event. I, I, I was talking to some other, uh, you know, courses, mayors and council members. And they were asking me who, you know, who came with you, right? And I said a couple of council members and then the city manager, city attorney and, and some, and I was kind of like surprised, uh, because some of them, either they're city managers or city attorney doesn't think it's a need, or they don't, uh, encourage their city managers or, or other employees to go. And I think it's such a, um, impactful event to have them there to, to be in one place with their peers, to hear their stories and things of that nature. I think the city gets a lot out of that, uh, and we definitely get a lot out when the council members attend those type of things. Uh, the stuff we bring back, um, is, is pretty powerful. Later, earlier today, I attended the, uh, Democratic Women's of Monterey County that had a luncheon with the, uh, two supervisors. Uh, our supervisor, Wendy Rudescu and supervisor Dan, I mean, um, Kate Daniels of District Five, uh, and they gave a, uh, both of them gave a powerful presentation. Uh, they're kind of like tag teamed it, but they're different individuals, both strong leaders. And, and the information they put out was impactful, particularly, uh, city manager, I think I, uh, took some, um, pictures of the slides as it impacts. They were talking about some of the impacts that are coming with the federal government not sending down a lot of that healthcare money. And, and, and the need for us to understand what's about to happen. So, uh, I want to appreciate those two, um, strong leaders, um, for, uh, making sure the county, particularly the peninsula, is aware of what's going on. And of course they're trying to protect us from any of those, uh, negative impact. I want to thank the fire department for their open house. Uh, it was filled with kids once again. And, and I think, um, you know, it's just a good, good place for kids to have opportunity to understand because, you know, if, if you didn't have an open house, right? You just see the fire truck with alarms going to danger, to the fire, so to speak. And then you see it coming back without those things on, but to actually see a fire truck up close, uh, see firefighters doing some of their work. I'm sure it helps kids when they think, um, uh, be less nervous when they're interacting with the fire. And so we appreciate the fire department for doing that. Uh, and I guess I want to, um, close with a, a special shout out to our city clerk. And all that, what she does to, um, keep the city moving forward, uh, and increase her abilities to do that. And that's not an easy task. And so we salute you for that. So thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Uh, having said that, we're at item number 11, which is 12, which is closed session. The city attorney will read us in a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council will have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property in question is 956 and 962 Hillby Avenue, Seaside, California. Agency negotiators, city manager, city attorney at all, uh, negotiating parties, Stepping Stone Outreach, Inc., and the city of Seaside. Under negotiation price terms of payment are both. They will also have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property in question is, uh, APN 031151-024. Generally located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Colonel Durham and 7th Avenue. generally located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Colonel Durham and 7th Avenue. Agency negotiators are city manager, city attorney at all. Negotiating parties, Monterey Salinas Transit and the city of Seaside. Under negotiation price terms of payment or both. And that concludes my reading.
And after I go to public comment about our closed session items, I'll go to Councilmember Garcia Arizona about the closing the meeting in honor of. Public comment is open on our closed session items.
Members of the public wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Public comment remains open on our closed session.
Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed on our closed session items. Councilmember Garcia Arizona.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to take a few moments to honor a community leader, an activist, a mother who did so much work for the Latino community, but also the Oaxaca community here in Seaside. Arriving at the age of 17, she migrated here to Seaside, did a lot of work, was one of the founding board members of Palenque Arts and contributing to the art classes, the dance classes, and just sharing the cultures. But aside from that, really bridging cultures as well, and I think that was the beauty, that she was never afraid of her background, of, of who she was, of her, her roots, and also helped out a lot when it came to our event, Oaxaca by the Sea. You know, she, she prepped the, the, the girls and the dancers, the little kids in preparation for this event the first year, and was just always excited about this type of event. One of the things that really caught my attention is, up until her last breath, she was still sending money over to Mexico to fund school supplies and toys and just basic necessities for the indigenous community in Oaxaca. And that just showed how big her heart, that despite facing a battle with cancer, she was still looking in the good of, of what she was doing, and although she left us at the age of 41, she was an impactful person in that short time that she was with us here in our community and leaves a great lasting legacy, and I, and I was saddened to hear about the passing. And I know Councilmember Burks knew her as well and would like to share some stories.
Councilmember Burks?
Yeah, so Carmen was a blessing for our community. She brought joy. If you've ever gone to any of the Palenque Arts, Dia de los Muertos, you've seen her artwork. Art was definitely her outlet, her passion, her way to connect with the community. I had the pleasure of being the principal over students. I still currently have one. And so just, this is really difficult to, for someone for so young to have to, to take, be taken away and really just send positive vibes to her family, that, you know, her husband and her kids that are still here, and yeah, that may she rest in peace. Thank you.
And anyone else? Yeah, I didn't know her as well as the rest of you, but, but I noticed she was a light in our community, and she made things better. Like you said before, you know, just volunteering all the things that she did is really what is the best of our community members, and she was one of them. And, you know, you always say sometimes people were, you know, taken too young, you know, but, but when God comes to get you, you know, he, he comes to get you. And the thing with that is when he comes to get you, then you're in a better place. And so that's what we have to think about is, you know, she was down here, she did the will, she was a positive person, and we were better off because we know her and knew her. So thank you so much. And this meeting will close in our honor. We will move into closed session, and thank you.